Remember audio enhancement used to our days in school. Audio enhancement used to be the group that did the microphones that some of you would have one on the back and it would be wired to a box somewhere.
Right.
That's how they got their start and now they have really they've morphed into being more of an all of a multiple solution by adding the security function, which is, we think is the right way to go.
Two questions. First one is, how did this start about? Is this because something was broken in these schools and it's not working?
So our initial review was as we were designing Smith Middle School to see what system we want to go in. We evaluated, learned of a system that Royal Oak has, went over, visited that system or reviewed that system and its capabilities. We brought that back and said, do we have any other needs in the district? It turned out that we were having issues at East and Leonard, where it made sense to potentially pilot there.
Normal cell phone replacement.
Normal cell phone replacement. And then, so we're choosing to pilot there. We'd like to get it to the post school next year and bring Smith online with the system. If it's, if it improves the privacy.
In a short time.
And then Athens would be, and then as we run it, they'd be elementarys and Troy High.
Just curious, why didn't we try and pilot this at Baker? Because we're trying to get it from homeschool and because these are different.
Because we, I mean, this is all administrative function. We have collaborative groups. We have a lot of discussions. We brought Jonathan. Jonathan was part of the, part of the group and then we decided it wasn't.
Yeah, I think our technology team was a key driver in the decision. We talk about capacity and being able to onboard different levels and what was needed. So Baker was a priority for us and that's where we planned to go. Once we've onboarded that elementary, but they felt that they couldn't onboard an elementary and a middle at the same time. So they're doing two elementarys and then we'll bring the middle on.
And the elementary, you chose elementary first because those were the systems that were the most going to break.
Correct. And so timing, Troy, you'll get to know him more and more. He likes to move. So he's a, I'd like to get it in the summer. Our best chance of doing that and being able to test that was within the two elementary projects. Baker would have been a larger project if he was less, less optimistic that he could get that done over the summer at the operational by fall. He feels really well higher than being, being able to be successful. And then test those programs and see. There's also, the sound enhancement feature is more, it's already being used more widely at the elementary level. In order to introduce that to the middle school and secondary levels, we would, there would need to be some training and some, a lot more discussion as well with, with our staff, because they don't currently. Are we okay with that for you? Okay. The next one is iPads. Looking to purchase iPads for night breaks. Part of the, part of the refresh and one hundred one adoption. So we're seeking approval of almost five hundred thousand dollars. I can, I told them to put the maximum price in. We believe that those prices for that generation are coming down. So this is a maximum amount in hundred dollars. So purchase. Questions?
So my question is not the amount of money this costs. My question is, I guess, are iPads at all for school students? Because eyes appear and I'm giving my, my career. I, I don't know how to sit and write a more serious paper. I keep more of this like this. And so I'm just, I'm wondering in what I was, in the time that I've been in the high schools, I haven't seen the iPad used. So my question is not this particular, you know, bid and the amount of money, but.
That's a broader decision that was decided three years ago. More than three years ago.
But at what point do we?
It was, it was like, it was right when I first got on.
Okay.
Right. But at what point do we reevaluate? Because this, this is a lot of money for, this is a lot of money for something I'm not. I, I would wager to guess the family people afford to buy one of these laptops, five hundred laptops or two.
So I can tell you about my kid who did it. She used her iPad to read, but mostly because there are apps on the walls and the teachers work with as well. When, because there was something going on in the classroom or written on the textbook, they would just go take a picture and then modify it. So that capability she used a lot. She had laptop along with iPad. She never typed stuff on the iPad most of the time. So she used a combination of the two. That was just my.
What's bank?
But is it still, is it, but is it still, what is your keep rate for me? So I'm wondering years ago.
So, so the original argument about this, because we had this very detailed conversation on this and it was, it was about what is the purpose of the iPad? And why would the teachers recommend the iPad? It had to do with interconnectivity in the classroom, being able to integrate with the other software that's there, that we weren't providing equal device as a workforce. If you, if you're providing a word processor workforce, then of course you need to go laptop. But that the idea was integration for teaching lessons was more critical. And that was the argument. I, I want to bounce back to Natalie to, if you, if you want to give an overview of whether you think that the original rationale is, is still valid, you know, but.
Yeah.
Because I, I don't, I don't think we should be out here deciding whether we should be or not. But I want to know why the rationale is.
Yeah. I mean, I think so, especially now when I think about the capabilities of the students to be able to go anywhere in the room, be able to present. It's all aligned with the, we got both our teacher laptops. The iPads are all able to work together. That was one of the biggest things that we heard, especially during the pandemic with the opportunities, it was all talk to one another. What's that?
Right. So the Apple.
The app, right. And I was gonna say, usually when Ron pulled this out and was talking about it, I know at the time, every, everything talked to each other, right? There were no problems or hiccups. Everything talked to each other.
The key is to provide access to all of this in a functional way. And we evaluate it all the time. Like we were evaluating it constantly at the elementary in terms of are they staying in class? Are they not? As we read more and learn more, so we can.
Are they getting, you know, as you look at high school classes, are the teachers taking advantage of them as an integrated tool?
Yes. I mean, I've seen it. I think we saw it used when we were in our chemistry visit just last year. We were spending time, they're set up intentionally. But I do want to just kind of breathe into what Chris just said about over constantly evaluating. One of the conversations we had to make the decision to go all Apple, when we talked about a potential future where we, where we maybe had family choice into a laptop, into an Apple laptop and what that might look like, right? But what, so what might be a district guarantee tool? And then what might be a family tool if you wanted to invest in that, to be able to do that? We, we did talk at that time about wanting to make sure that we had at least Mac based level for all students and we integrated an Apple system. And we are new to this system and we all feel very confident in it right now. But it is only eighteen, twenty-four months.
Yeah.
That we've been in this full Apple ecosystem. So it's probably a great time for us to kind of step back and think a little bit about what does that tool look like? How are we using it? Because there's plenty of other ways that you can connect into this ecosystem. It doesn't have to be an iPad. It just happens to be the tool that we have been committed to. And I think are currently in that system.
But I think it's, to me, elementary is separate from middle and high school when I come to these things, because the, the needs, right? What students need to produce is very different. And so the tools that they need to, to, to do that is potentially going to be very different. So, you know, I understand that, that's something that, but it hasn't really been fully evaluated in a couple of years. Like we're post pandemic, we're, you know, we're in a different moment. So I think it's a fair, and that's, you know, and that's not to say that, you know, we're where we are now, we'll approve this and then. But I, I think it's, I think it's fair to ask and to look forward, right?
I, so, last week when we did the English visits, I actually went to Athens the day after we went to Troy High. And at the Athens visit, because I was the only board member there, I think the teachers were a little more honest to me. It was just a different, I don't know. But what if, I'm, after listening to me though, because those teachers are debating, like how much should we use the iPad and then now with AI, so how much do we go back to paper and pencil? And so when you're doing paper and pencil, the idea that you could then have a student take a picture with an iPad and then upload something like an iPad is going to be a much easier piece of technology if you're asking for handwriting pictures.
Or share with the crowd. Is that okay?
But I'm just, I would, I agree that we should always have a eye to it. But I think that listening to those teachers talk about the training that they have gotten to integrate iPads in and the training that they feel like they still need for other pieces, I would be, this is from somebody who hardcore educated for laptops. I would be hesitant to ask them to reevaluate right now because we're asking them to do curriculum changes and other things. And so I hesitate to, from this seat, say now you need to also think about reintegrating your technology. I think it's something that we need to.
It would be like as a next school year, but I think it's, but I also, the fact that we've done something doesn't mean that we now don't ask ourselves if it makes sense going forward. Like it's, we're not.
I think there's, I think there's youthful time for us to, to engage in, in that very conversation. It gets healthy for us to circle back after three years and say, okay, what, what is, what is the level of use? How is it being used? I appreciate you mentioning the training piece because we, we really focused hard on the training piece and to know that, that was something that was valuable to them is, is really important. So that's a check mark to make sure that as we move forward. And I know it's always not an adage, but we will, we will be regularly refreshing. So the opportunity will afford itself to circle back and have those, and have those conversations. But I think your point is well taken. Are we looking, are we, are we asking ourselves are there the right questions in terms of utilization and so forth? And are we utilizing the right tools? And as we see additional challenges with technology, AI model, that might be something that we, we, we have to consider. So I think it's, it's a good question.
And that was the conversation that, and we had a pretty deep conversation around it. And it, and it came down to, from an administrative perspective, the question, why do you have these questions? What is the purpose of the iPad, right? Is it a workforce? Is it a collaborative tool? And, and the, you know, if you talk to students, they want workforce, right? They, it's like, I just want some, I can get my papers or none. But what, what was communicated back to us from staff is the staff wanted a collaborative tool. And then as a collaborative tool, iPad work better. But again, like she had not worked. We have a really good conversation about, because all of us were like, are we sure? Because it seems like at that point, we, we should just get rid of laptops, you know, by the time we go to school. So.
Do we have? For. So are there opportunities? But I don't get that question right, the answer right now. But are there opportunities in places where students who don't have access to a laptop at home? And I'm thinking more of high school students, right? When you need to, if you need to write a five to 10 page paper for the students who don't have access to that at home, do they have, is there any school district provided opportunity to, to use computers and such?
Of course, the assumption that the key bags were providing, you know, that integrated iPad would be high for the paper. But the integrated, the integrated, the integrated, excuse me. Keyboard with the phone, with the trackpad now is, is really fairly close to the smaller, to the eleven inch laptop.
Nathan has a D E computer right now.
And the office suite.
Maybe they're different than the elementary.
Well, they are.
Yes, yes.
The Facebook keyboard is way different.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the office suite is on the iPad. So it's like Word is an app. It actually has a functionality of a computer and it's not the same keyboard. I don't, so elementary has to be durable.
But yeah, I was gonna say, not to discount the point, which is we, you know, are we doing a regular evaluation, right? And determine are we still moving in the direction of.
Yeah. I mean, Chris too, I mean, Cassandra's senior this year. She does all the work on a laptop. Nathan's a sophomore. He does all of his own department. So Cassandra turns her iPad in early. She's like, I can turn this up or in.
I have two questions. One question. Christine, I know I A does all Chromebooks. Do you talk to their teachers and how that works compared to the other schools?
Yeah. So our, all of our A teachers actually have, have MacBook's and we have Apple T E's and I E's. So the teachers are working through that process that way. The classroom, they, they work with the students who have the Chromebooks and they have not complained about that interactivity there. They prefer to keep it. That's what they had started with before the pandemic. And they work on, what's it called? Canvas? Is that their?
Canvas.
Can.
Canvas.
Canvas. Canvas is their student information system. And they're also in Gmail. They also work through Gmail.
They work through the Google.
Through the, right, through the Google suite.
Google family.
Yeah, the Google suite. Yep. So they.
And that's, that's I D Y, right? That's their I A Y.
Correct. Yep. Yeah. So across the three canvases.
Right.
So they, we actually had a lengthy conversation with them when we went to the Apple universe here. And they wanted to maintain what their students had, but move the teaching, the teaching platform in the classroom too.
So you were saying we can be integrated? So the Apple family can be integrated seamlessly with the Chromebooks?
It doesn't work the same way as far as like projection in a classroom. So it doesn't work, like you can't, it doesn't interact with the student in the same way in the classroom. But their pedagogical approach is different in many ways.
The I D.
And so they're, they, they are asking for different, they have a request for different interactivity with their technology based on the needs of that program and that tool, which is different than what we have for some of our.
I mean, I, I would think how do pedagogy and technology are kind of independent in a way. So.
There's a lot of overlap. So I wouldn't say that they're 100% connected or that they're completely separate. But there's a lot of overlap. And how you're using your technology.
How you're using it to be different.
Right. To be teaching. So, but I guess to answer your question, which was to be consulted, do we recognize when they have their, yes, they have different, they have different needs that they want to met through maintaining that tool for their students. So their teachers are in the Apple world, their students are still in the Chromebook.
Yeah, the students are still.
And I know back when, when we had the, they had talked back then, they had discussed with them about the plus and minus is.
Yeah, my kid did take it.
Okay. So for now, we're okay with the refresh? Okay. Food service contract.
Food service contract. So this was uploaded to the, so pardon us. There was a lot of considerable time after putting to move the recommendation and have the process. We considered the process is online in the memo. And we are recommending that the, that the contract with Charval is again mostly based on series of benefits. So you can see in the little calculator. I can tell you, Kyle Anderson, our interim finance director, even Gale took the lead on this. We had several discussions regarding the direction everyone wanted to go as a district. We've been in various set of circumstances, including the, the client surrender situation and such. We think it's best that we continue with general services.
Are you looking at a one year extension or?
So this is a mandatory five year, but when we're, when we're contacted through a food service management company, there's a mandatory bid every five years. There is no, there is no prohibition on bidding there. So we did, we did get covered.
It's a one year extension. We're doing a one year renewable?
We're doing, we can do a structure where it's a one year contract with four renewable years, which is what we did last time.
I was gonna say, that's what it's ever done, right?
Yeah. So it's an annual, it's an annual evaluation.
The requirement is only four years.
Yeah.
So that would allow us if we wanted to explore revamping a brand, which is in-house, anything like that, we could be doing that simultaneously with proof.
So that's one of the things that NSBA, the current language just went on food. And I mean, I don't know a kid who likes Charval's food. So like I never heard time renewing this when all I hear is how gross.
Exactly. I got that feedback yesterday. And, and it was not even a whole discussion or the fact that those.
And so I just like looking at the, so the, the one that was, you know, so Charval's was at eighty-four and the SFE was at eighty-three. So I'm like, those are, to me, those are really close.
They are.
Numbers.
Yeah.
And so I was just.
And the highest points they got is for the management candidate.
Who they propose as the manager. This, the success of the food service management company is fully dependent upon their contract manager. So they all scored twos there. I think they, they all had a recommended candidate that was qualified and in the movement of the district. I can tell you, we did site visits with the other two. Personal conversations with the liaison, the Gale position of those. And they're, I hate to say it, they're all the same.
Mine is anecdotal, of course. I spoke to with students from Dearborn School District and superintendent. They work with us at the, and they're extremely happy because they provide food that is appropriate for their community and that is catered to the needs of the district. Of course, anecdotal.
So anecdotally, Dearborn was very physical.
Okay.
And spoke to the liaison.
Okay.
And a completely different conversation. So that was, that was one. And then we also had conversations with our, our account.
Is there something that we can? Is, is there something that we as a district can do? Because we're not locked into this for five years, right? Is there something that we can do in the next year, even if we take over Charval's? And say, this is where, you know, these are the food areas where we would like to see movement?
Yes.
Because the, the feedback even at the middle school level is that.
The food is just gross.
And so you don't want to, you know, I, I think there's, it doesn't have to, you know, it doesn't have to be five star rated food. But I, to, to see if there's at least in the next year, we can make some type of movement.
Yes, there is. Yes, we have. And no, there haven't been any results. So we will continue to evaluate it. We will continue to press it. We will continue to unlock or unleash the resources to invest in the program, not from an, only from an equipment standpoint, but also from a food quality standpoint. All of these companies are dependent upon purchasing. And they use their, their purchasing power to buy and bar. And they limit their, this is my. They, they use that purchasing power and limit themselves in the flexibility of diverse menus and such. All of them told us in, in Charval's, I pointed at page twenty or twenty-one of their proposal in which they talk about their global, global eats awarding program. Don't forget here, they have done some programmatic things this year at the high school level. Some, some stands and such that have provided some, some benefits and we've gotten some good feedback. I will tell you, I'm like thinking, well, that they're very, they surveyed the kids quite often to see what, what they're saying. And we have some, we, we only have some challenges. But I do believe that there's abilities to really push in a little bit, get them to be more creative in their selection.
I think even at the, like, the elementary or middle school level, I don't know how much creativity is needed, but like chicken fingers should taste like chicken fingers. And fries should be.
Chicken, we, that gave, well, that was like, that gave.
Full flush chicken.
Chicken, yeah.
Very, very muscle, whole muscle chicken.
So, so that's like.
You never want any chicken done.
But then they, but they, they're not whole muscle. It's the same thing.
So, so can I? What I can suggest is for this is that we have a very flexible contract approach, right? So we know we have to renew and we go. But I think that, that what I like about it is that it's only one year. So we could.
Suppose we do something within that one year this week.
Well, there's two things. Cause we want to talk about at NSBA, some of the, we had another example of a whole different way you handle food service that we want to talk about and everybody here. And, and it's like, we have the luxury of excess funds in that account, right? So we can keep going with what we're doing. If we want to explore and try things, this would be a great year to do it, right? Because any of those extra funds, we can turn around. And, and maybe that's a conversation that we have Charval that where we say, okay, what if, right? What are some things, what pilots could you do? If we can address, and maybe we're saying, we want a task force, we want to create a task force to try to rethink food service. But that's a different conversation than whether we want to prove this contract.
Well, but I, I think it is and it's not. Because I think on one hand it's separate, but also is Charval's going to be willing to have a conversation that, that says like, we're doing this, but we need to see movement or we will go off the bit again. Like we're not.
Or we're actively.
Not guaranteed.
Or we're, we're, we're on a dual track. We're on a dual track. You have one year. And at the end of the year, we, we are going to look at an alternative to working with big foods, right?
Because if it's all equally crappy and it's, you know, then we're going to just look at your numbers.
Yeah. Because I was part of the fir, the first bit, part of the evaluation team the first time they came around. And one of the reasons we gave into Charval's and away from Sedex was because they talked about their 500 recipe book and their ability to hit more ethnic foods, to hit a higher spice profile on their foods to try to match our student body. And then in fairness to them, one year in their contract, COVID brings it back, right? And, and so they were just getting their feet wet. And, and then we were in supply chain hell when we were trying to huddle together something that met the four food groups, right? And so it now is a chance where it's like, okay, things are stable. So we should see the thing that promised us at the beginning of your first five year contract. But I certainly would make sense for Rick to be able to go back and say, yeah, the good news and bad news. The good news is you, you got the contractor. The bad news is you got a year to really demonstrate.
My question is, if we continue to renew, what incentive do they have to improve?
Continue to what?
If you renew it, what is renew it?
If you don't renew it, you don't have food service for the fall. I mean, I'm saying.
You would renew it.
Right. But, but that dual track, you say, we are.
They're, they're motivated. You can see their, their proposal is five hundred and thirty four pages.
But they're.
Here it is.
But.
They, all of them, I mean, Troy is a substantial contributor. So they're, they're not, I mean, they're trying. They're, they're not meeting the needs, right? I mean, there, there's plenty of excuses that can be made. I do think there's been more value in effort this year. Trying to get some different programs, at least into our secondary, our secondary buildings. And they are dealing, we're dealing with higher volumes, right? So they're, they're dealing with more kids eating, which is a challenge.
Yep.
It creates its own challenges. So I think there's a value in effort on their part to, to try. But yes, they're open to conversations and yes, they're open to being held accountable. And we're going to do both of those things. And I do think it's fair to, to evaluate what alternative paths we have on our team.
I mean, that, that I think will motivate them, right? If you say, we're doing a dual track here, we renewed you for a year. We're gonna, we're gonna do a, you know, we're gonna have a, a group that's really going to, a task force is gonna look at what are the different ways we can deliver food service.
We ought to include those two.
Yeah. That's, oh yeah, absolutely. Right. So do some margin urgency or something. Carol and I will, we do, we talk about what this group will look like and who we might want to see out of that group. Then I, we can work, we can work and put a group like that together, sort of timeline together as to when we can meet, provide some initial feedback here from them. And then give us some time to demonstrate some of the, some of that food. And what plans they would have for it. I would love to have their chef as part of that. We have a chef assigned to us. We'd like to have their chef assigned to that task force. Because I think if you include them as a partner, they're. Because I think if you include them as a partner, they're a bit perker from a business perspective, right?
Yeah.
They're, I mean, they're easy to work with, right? So, so to me, it's like, let's see what we can do with them. And, and, and if we can't see, we get there with them, then they know we're gonna be looking without them, right?
Um, in the rubric, where's the quality of food where there's no quality? I don't see it anywhere, at least not in the wording.
It's not in here.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
And increase participation.
I'm sure we're here to.
Uh, well, it's important, it's a relative.
And I mean, it's relative to the individual that you have.
I would say it's, um, I mean, that's.
It's relative.
I would say it's kind of, it's, 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 it's. Plan the increased participation.
But that, that could be any number of things, right?
Yeah, it could. I would say.
But it's, it's.
It's underlying.
Yeah. So we, we have a plan of how this works, I think it's.
I think.
Yeah, and, and I would like to see if we can add quality food in, in years. I understand it's relative, I understand.
Yes, it is done.
That might be hard to compare though, because you have, you have a company that's not working at your place at the same time.
So what we did, and Carl was on that, we brought them in, they demonstrated, right, and they tasted. So you can have.
So you guys have worked this, that was a while.
On the first half. But I will tell you what I see with camp here, so since we have served natural.
That's right.
It's like, we're at the conference and they have all, oh, this, this food's great, and they can, this actually is this cool.
The, the first time around, because we had, there was a smaller competitor that come in and they were on our conferences and they are in the honey.
It was SFE?
Oh, that was SFE.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
Look at their website, I was like, they, I feel like they have a lot of options.
So the first time around, they, they started, they finished.
Yeah, I was just.
They were intrigued because they were scratch movers.
I was just, that's their, which I think is a, they could be a better.
Unless they.
Well, again, that's part of that task force, right? What would it take, right? And it's like, okay, we know we have with, with free universal lunch, we know our revenue stream is different. We know if, if that means some centralized, um, functions can move up to the buildings in order to succeed, we have, we may have money to do that, right? That, that's why I think it's like, we can't solve the problem here at this table, but it's probably worth a conversation to say, can we rethink funding the, rethink the service in a way that provides that we, we do okay financially and we somehow provide it better, right? That's all I'm, I think. And I think that's a really good motivation for Chartwell. And to know that we are not just gonna rely on big firm marketing, right? There's a good conversation. I mean, it's, it's stuff that he knows. I've been crossing it out since, since he's known the.
I, I think maybe this is about, I think maybe happy with crispy chicken tempers, crispy fries.
Yeah, but.
Well, there is no deep fry. You're not allowed to have a deep-fried food anymore. That's why we, that's why you just paid thirty-two thousand dollars for a comedy oven.
The biggest problem is even though we're giving them free food, only fifty-eight percent of our kids want that, which means it's so bad.
I would think that forty-eight, forty-two percent of them like what they take right from the.
Yeah, right. It's, well.
True.
Yeah, they have to careful, or their names, right? Some, some people all like it.
Probably a food allergy.
Yeah, I said, or their name, it's very, it's, it's, it's. Don't it be the process.
I'm gonna do, yeah.
Yes, okay.
Thanks, Rick. I feel like it'll end when I leave, so.
Okay. So that gives you twelve minutes.
Twelve, twelve.
You only left her twelve minutes. I don't know, that's, you're, you're.
Yeah, that's right.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Let's see if she can do it in twelve minutes.
So, um, the, the next.
Do you, do you want at least come up for the twelve minutes?
There was a question.
Yes. Sure.
We incorporated the, uh, items A and B under teaching and learning to, to one PowerPoint, it's only five slides. Uh, the first two slides are, are specific to A, which is, uh, math, reviewing math implementation. So the question is, the question was, as we think about last spring where we were, what did we learn from, what did we learn through that experience? Um, so what did we learn through that experience? What did we promise and where are we at now? It's, it's essentially kind of, so what? Here's what, so what now? So, uh, what we learned, what, um, we, we needed, what we learned is what we needed to increase stakeholder communication and opportunities for input. Um, going into the process, we targeted, the group targeted incoming, we're talking about specifically math, we targeted incoming sixth graders, uh, and we targeted seventh, uh, and our current seventh, or current sixth and eighth graders, because in our modules review, the students that were going to be immediately impacted in that, in that change, uh, in that proposed change. What we maybe didn't anticipate is some of the folks that would have concerns were at different grade levels. So what we learned forward is expanding grade levels, uh, through, the, the, expanding that convers, expanding the conversation through grade levels, uh, was something that had been done, maybe would have, yeah, uh, maybe have taken down some of the, some of the, the challenges.
So middle school math, talking to elementary school.
Yeah, talking to, oh, maybe, and expanding that beyond just fifth-grade parents, right? Because, you know, I think he was, fifth-grade parents are immediately impacted, that's where we're gonna talk to. How about let's back that up? So moving forward, it's backing that up and talking to, expanding the grade level conversation. Um, and, and what we heard about Claire was, uh, a, a question about assessments, questions about data and so forth. So with that, we might be adapting standardized assessments, uh, for, with the ability to, uh, do some long-term measurement of student progress, uh, maybe considering earlier on in the process, what additional data might be needed or wanted in terms of anticipating questions moving forward.
Before, before.
So that would be a question, a question moving forward that we, we might want to ask ourselves. So those were, those were two key learnings through, uh, through last spring's implementation. So expand, anticipate, you know, what questions might be, might be asked, and specifically, um, the data that might be needed or desired with respect to that.
The data you mean to get the baseline also for changes.
Whatever, whatever data we might anticipate, would we want?
I think I just want to add one thing to your expanded, I think we, we did also, we talked about expanding to elementary, but also ensuring that our message is clear across the whole community. So not just even elementary, but we're talking about our families who are at secondary. Because we did have, um, reflecting on our changes in the, in the spring, we did have families who were in our high school who said, I would love to advocate for you, I wish I would have known more. Right? We've always been partners in this work. I didn't know this was coming. It would have been a lot easier for me to stand next to you and advocate had I been able to learn along the way. So I think that was really genuine feedback and something that we talked about.
Almost like, what about, um, in terms of communication with downstream teachers? Because I think that, that was something that, you know, the, with negative pushback from high school math teachers in some paths, right? Sometimes that's through parents, but, but a lot of that was changing with secondary, with high school teachers. Is there, is there anything we could have done differently about internal communications to make sure people on the, I'll call it the catcher's mitt, right? I'm gonna be catching these kids coming from you to understand how those kids are gonna be prepared or differently prepared than what it seems to.
What we had, so.
Anything we could have done that we didn't do.
The groups that we had built out, our, our, our thinking was we had the right mix of individuals in the conversation, having, um, our, our math department chairs as part of the conversation and our math specialists as part of the conversation.
Shares were all about the license.
Yeah, yeah, we had, we had what we believe to be the right, uh, individuals in the conversation. We, the right answer to that question is making sure that we were equipping them with the appropriate information moving forward and assuring that those conversations were taking place. Because there is that, there is that opportunity, there is that chance potentially where we, we expect conversations are taking place downstream and maybe were not. So creating some assurances around those conversations taking place are going to, uh, to, to, to.
Good question. Do, do you do that, like, levelized conversations or do you do more broad, direct conversations?
That, those conversations are pretty, looking at it from a curricular change management standpoint, or change management standpoint specifically curriculum. The goal is always to engage as many individuals who are directly impacted by the change in that conversation. Now, not every person is able or wants to be a part of that conversation, but the goal is always to capture as many of the individuals, at minimum, it's department chairs, it's the individuals within buildings who, who help, uh, who help, uh, assure most, how the, how the professional learning, for instance, is going to take place. So in our case, it would be our math specialists. In this particular case, it would be our math specialists. In ELA situation, it would be our, our literacy consultants and so forth, our literacy specialists. So the goal is probably to impact or to engage as many in the, in the conversation as possible. Uh, but not everyone's always able to participate, uh, or in some cases will.
Backup, just like it. Um, stable communication. I'm wondering, have you had any conversations with the team about sort of, is the, uh, future rollout plan? These are the forms of communication. This is a timetable for how, like, have we established any? Do we have something that is laid out to recruit already? And, and is that what we followed for middle school math? And if so, has there been any thought about adjustments to that?
Well, I think in fairness to what we, in fairness to the team, what we followed was the processes that we had in place prior.
Right, right.
So we, we were, we were moving along a track that was consistent with the way we had moved change previous.
Since I did.
Yeah, and so, and so the thought wasn't, did we need to have a more structured communication plan in place? I think moving forward, what we would have learned is, it, it, we will definitely want to ask the right questions in terms of the who, the what's and the when. Who needs to be a part of that conversation? What, what needs to be said? And when, within the context of the conversation, does that need to take place? So, uh, I, I would say, in the, in, into the future, if we were to bring a curricular change that is more significant than you would expect to see, kind of the who, the what, the when from a communication standpoint? Kind of, we don't anticipate. We don't, it just may be a change of that magnitude.
Of course, of course.
Structure, right, moving forward?
Yeah.
Really?
Really, because really it wasn't the curriculum so much as it was the course structure conversation.
And I think that's what, that's what kind of got us a bit, a bit on, from, from the communication standpoint.
Well, and I would just say, asking me, I know, you know, we ended, we did the case with live event, you know, and that was something, but it was more a reaction to, okay, we, we've got people upset with us, let's make sure that we're communicating that. I think, you know, as, as we're getting kind of step to say, at this stage, we do this, at this stage, we can do that.
So I don't think we did different with algebraal this year is we had an information like up of the pilot with, for our families, where we invited families in. So we, we've been pissed, I don't know if we're being honest, from the last.
Okay, good, okay.
It was more of an active of that communication.
And how, was that well attended?
Um, I think, uh, or.
More appropriate, more typical of what we see for a great night, okay. So around thirty?
Thirty. Uh, so to reach a whole, whole, whole place. Curriculum, new curriculum is pretty for.
Yeah, no, I agree. Of course, structure change is much more critical.
But also wanting to be more responsive.
Yeah.
Um, so that is something that we did differently. Also, Kendra communicated about it in her newsletter to X, which goes to everybody.
Right.
So typically, we wouldn't, I shouldn't say strictly, historically, we would not communicate about a pilot we're doing to the entire community. We would communicate to a.
Effectively.
So just trying to communicate more broadly.
Okay. And so what have we done so far with the shift in the science at, at high school? At, at curricular change in terms of order and, you know, breaking chemistry into two semesters and physics into two semesters?
What do you want to be done?
But what kind of, can you, like, how, what's the dissemination look like today on that?
Yeah, so we, so one of the things that, um, I think we kind of learned in our experience last year with visiting each of the ninth grade parent nights, is that, um, we talked to the parents of incoming ninth graders, but ninth grade is pretty prescriptive in terms of what kids can take, because most of them take health. Most of them trying to get some of those required things out of the way, um, but.
But it makes sense at the beginning of your high school career.
It makes sense at the beginning to have that, and we should. Um, but we, we were thinking a group that we were missing is tenth grade parents. Because tenth grade is where you actually start to go, oh, I like this and I want to go in this direction. So we hosted a tenth grade parent family night with the entire teaching and learning team. Marie was there and we watched through all of the requirements from tenth grade on. And so, and both, that was. Yeah, I'm sorry, I was gonna say, both of our administrative teams were there as well. So it was a, it was a one Troy type of parent night, which was great. So representing both Troy and Amitya, probably about a hundred and ten.
The service is boardroom assault.
It's boardroom assault. Great question. So that's what we talked through. I teach, um, pediatric DVD flexibility, and whenever I show up, they'll take. Um, so it allowed us to answer any questions and talk about, um, shifts in the science specifically. So we talked about a shift in the science experience of the students at that, at that period.
So, you know, just like we learned from the middle school on how we need to communicate to the ones that are really affected, maybe disseminate that to the ninth and the eighth grade, if we go from what we had learned.
We have not made a huge communication out of science, um, because it's been very contained at the high school and.
Well, to your point, you, you did ninth, this is probably a year before.
Right.
It had.
And it doesn't impact ninth at all. It was for ten and eleven, and then the courses themselves aren't, you're still taking chemistry, you're still taking physics, you're still taking, so there, I think the hard part is the sweet spot of where the questions are and where they.
I was gonna say, so you still have two types of that, you, you want to begin now, you want to begin, or Emily, you end the, the, right?
And, and the science changes really more in line with, and content is taught and so forth versus not where we had changed this, this structure, the course, they, per se. We provided opportunities for, for, we provided all, I provided all.
How does it change the structure?
Actually, they went to the boundary to hear.
Right, is it, is it, if somebody that's in, that's somewhat impacted, it's, it's confusing, so.
So we answered all those kinds of questions of like, how do we navigate that? I think the difference was really the block, like, the concept of chemistry as a, it's still chemistry.
Yes, right, right, right.
Right, and the concept of physics is still physics.
But certainly our approach in the classroom is, again, I would say, it's common in terms of tran, transition or transformation.
People were. And, and part of this is district, and part of it, I think, is building why people did not understand how to register. Like, there was, there was some confusion about registration. And this goes back to the comments that I made in March about access to counselors. Like, when kids don't feel like they have access to their counselors and they have questions about how to register and if I have to take, you know, and like kids who are current sophomores, this doesn't impact them, but it does impact them because of the way it was offered and their choices change and so their requirements don't change, but their choices change. And if their counselors are not good at communicating that, like, there, there has been a, it, it's not, um, I don't feel like anybody's worried that they're not going to be able to get the classes that they want. And I don't think anybody's worried that they're not going to have access to APs. And so I think in that regard, it hasn't been strengthened with the, like, nitty-gritty when we're talking about, like, things that make kids more anxious or less anxious. It has been.
Yeah, and this year, we actually had really great growth and some changes when it comes to thinking about and talking about all the work that's been going out of secondary. So on Valentine's Day, actually, we were also doing Rather Spent Valentine's Day with Natalie, Natalie and I together. Um, we met with our entire district counseling team, so all of our counselors across the district, including IA and our middle schools. And we had a full program review of economics and secondary. And we went through soup to nuts, all of our programs, six through twelve, for everyone who's in the room. Because we had such a, such a lot, we had growth in counseling, we had some improvement in counseling. And it, what was wonderful about that day was we brought in everyone from each department to talk about their program. We put together a comprehensive slide deck that we walked through and we collected all of their questions throughout. We answered all of those questions. We really spent the whole day together working on that. Um, and I think for our counselors, it validated and helped them understand, for our high school counselors, what is the foundation that is being laid for these kids when they come to us in ninth grade? So they could really understand, oh, this is what that middle school experience sounds like. And then for the middle school folks, where are they going and how are we getting them ready? And then furthermore, when we came to, um, enrollment and course selection this year, um, we created a common slide deck for courses so that students could, and families could access a slide deck that describes all the courses that was shared in both buildings. So as a family, you could go and click through it and look at what was there. And, um, also all of our course selection opportunities are aligned. So there's been a lot of work and I, I, I really highly credit, um, Vernon and Ramo and their collaborative spirit in wanting to enrich these experiences in whole buildings. They've come together to look at what those structures are and this has kind of been a nice way for them to. They've come together to look at what those structures are and this has kind of been a nice way for them to kind of breathe into answering some of those questions. We have a ways to go as we continue to build, but there's been some willingness in that engagement around collaboration for the opportunity.
Our counselors also presented alongside us at that 10th grade parent night. So a lot of parents came up after and were able to have access to them to answer some of the questions, which was good.
Good. It's a great conversation. So this, this slide here, middle school implementation, the second portion was, I would say, this is kind of promises made, promises kept. So we committed to PD, we committed to our parents and we would have, we would have a robust plan for PD. We committed to having, continuing with our math specialists. And then we committed to additional and additional assessment that we would use to, to inform the classroom instruction moving forward. That would then also long-term provide us data to see, to see how that implementation is, is moving forward. So these, these bullet points are specific to what we said we would do and what actually, and what ultimately occurred this year.
Good question. When I read this, something came into my mind. It says hosted multiple opportunities and teachers had multiple opportunities. Kind of means that you provided an avenue for them to learn, but do we have data that all math teachers actually took these opportunities and got the B?
Yeah, so the summer one, no. So the summer was more of an invitation for them to like to join, but for every teacher, every job, yes. So like during the school day, professional learning, they all had opportunities.
So they all did join. So. For math students. I, it just made me think. That's all. I'm sorry. Yes, exactly.
That's horse standing front.
That's, that's like saying, yeah, we let them come, but I don't know if they all came. I don't know if they all learned.
The first one was opportunities, the second one is session.
Oh, the second one also is opportunities. Oh, yeah. Two different sessions. Yeah.
Can I ask you?
I'd say touch points there or.
Yeah, the student test opportunities provided, so over five hundred, over five hundred students took the test. And what does that look like relative to previous years?
About the same. I mean, I think they have similar numbers in the past. So it wasn't a huge difference.
Okay.
So it's not.
Well, what we wanted, what we wanted to demonstrate there is that there was a concern that advancement opportunities would not be there.
Or that kids would be afraid to.
And the point of that is that students are continuing to take advantage of those advancement opportunities at essentially the same cost.
We're going to see an increase of those in fifth graders wanting to test out on the sixth grade math, but that won't happen yet. That will happen in your home buildings this year.
So we'll have that data to share later.
Yes, and I, yes, and I think one of the important pieces of that is when we, when we made this shift, we also shifted our, that sixth grade, test out of sixth grade assessment into the day as an option for all fifth grade students. It no longer was on a Saturday where you had to take it, but it's an opportunity for all of our students in our fifth grade. Your fam, your parents still, we don't force our kids to take it because we know it's not appropriate for all kids. But for any family who wants to sign their child up for that opportunity, it happens during the day and they're building a comfortable environment for them. So we really want to make sure that we are extending an opportunity for all kids in an attempt to be able to meet kids where they are and place them appropriately in that.
So I'd be very curious when we have the results back, so we know how, but this is how many took the test, but that's not how many placed in.
And these are not, right, this is, oh, actually, no, this is 500 students who attempted to test out of math, passed, who are sixth grader or older.
That's right.
So it's not.
There's nine or six.
So it's not one.
Particular grade, it's just.
No, that's any, any. So if we're, you're a child, yes. So if you wanted to test out of Algebra One or Geometry or Algebra Two, those all happen at the same time. So that's.
So I think it would be, once the fifth graders take that test and once we have the numbers of where kids are going, I'd even want to see how many, so how many this year took sixth grade math and, and, I mean, took seventh grade math? And then this coming year, how many are going to need sixth grade math versus seventh grade math?
Yeah, ultimately, the, you know, if we're succeeding, we'll have more kids who end up opting into Algebra One in grade. And so, you know, we want to be able to see that.
That's different.
We want to.
There are different points in time, but there's those transitioning to sixth grade and then there's the.
But to get there, every year, there's, there are shifts where the kids are testing out and moving forward, right? So it would be totally helpful.
Tracking, of course.
Yeah, if we just track down over the next three years.
But I would like to see probably percentage of kids rather than number of kids.
Percent, yes. Yeah, that's equal. You'll want to break it again.
But just to clarify, getting into Algebra One is not a test out. There's no test to it. If anybody can sign up.
I think it's really important. They go try to drive it.
Although you can get in at seventh grade or or sixth grade or if you test out, you can go into Algebra One and test it. You can test it, yeah, by testing out those.
By testing out.
You're testing in, yes.
By testing out, yes.
So those bottom two bullets, I think, lead into the work that we're doing to make sure that students are prepared for Algebra One. So I'll go back to what Carl, what you said, which was our goal is to ensure that our students are, more, even more students are prepared for Algebra One in eighth grade, right? Our measure of success is not how many students are testing out of math six and a math seven. Because we do believe that philosophically, math six will be able to meet the needs of students who are in math five per exam.
Right.
Our goal is that we have more students who have access to that Algebra One in, in eighth grade. And so those last two bullets, they're talked about two efforts, I think, that are really important, that to learn more about eighth grade math and honors Algebra One. And what the difference is and what they should be thinking about as parents. And then we also provided all of our seventh grade students with an Algebra readiness assessment that was given in their classrooms so that they could see, am I prepared to be successful in Algebra One? It was not a placement test. It was just a data point.
For them to understand.
For them to be able to take home to their families and say, okay, here's where I am, here's what I learned at that night, here's what my child is achieving currently. They love math, like it's, you know, we're going to sign up and push Christine to be successful next year or Christine's going to be much better at eighth grade math, that's a great place for her and we're going to spend a year building her confidence so that she's ready when she's in high school.
But in general, though, entering, getting into Algebra One is not the measure of the depth of the teaching. It's actually how we do in Algebra One is the true depth.
Correct, yes, success and.
Success.
Sure, but that's just, you know, that's, if we're trying to open our opportunity, we want to see whether that's open or not. And, and that would be true of how many kids end up in Geometry in the period as well. So that's, just looking at those percentages so we can see, are, are we, are we? One of the concerns for many of the parents is that fewer kids will be ready to do geometry on the new regimen, right? So, so I want to be able to see, I want to see, are the same proportion of kids taking geometry in grade as well before we change the curriculum? So if they are, then we know that that's not an issue, right? And you can show that to a parent who's concerned.
Yes, so geometry in eighth grade.
So, and, and I was.
One eighth?
They, they would have to test out or something.
That would be a dump.
I know. We have students that do that, right?
Yeah.
But I, but I don't think.
Very few, very few. And I don't, it's this fate that we're going to see more, but the question is, will we see less? Because that was one of the concerns that we had with parents is, I have super achieving math students and, and they wouldn't be able to get, you know, they wouldn't be able to.
Two multiple jobs.
So it's important for us to kind of look at, because the, the argument we're making is no one gets hurt by this change, but, but some kids benefit, right? So I want to be able to look and say honestly, it's the truth, you know, due to, and my guess is our math leads are going to be in geometry. If they were going to be in geometry years ago, they'd be in geometry this year, right? But let's look at all those numbers that, you know, as we lay out sort of our course show looks like in general.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So I, so I think the regular, for more following the, the, what used to be, you know, with the tracking. So getting at least a data point of starting maybe with last year, how many eighth graders we had in Algebra, what percentage, not numbers, but what percentage of our eighth graders were in Algebra One, what percentage were in Math A? And then what it looked like at the ninth grade level? So how many, what percentage of kids were in Algebra One, what percentage were in Geometry? Seeing what happens this, beginning of this next school year and then what happens at the beginning of the fall.
Again, with the recognition, we won't really see the full picture for three years, it takes two years. And the other thing is, I wouldn't be shocked if this year we saw some disintegration in some areas because it's only, you know.
Well, there was no change for seventh grade instruction for the kids who are.
Right, right.
So it remains seven, eight this year and then next year, but it's a little bit harder sometimes. So it's either a change in the, it'll look a bit.
Yeah. But I just, we need to recognize that at the beginning, hopefully, we don't see much, you know, it should look pretty similar. And then, but second year should look a little different, third year should look, you know, that's what we're going to find and see if there's a big difference, we'll see it. Or.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
If we succeed in our sixth grade being in depth like we were talking about, should we also see some improvement in our high school scores?
I think we, I think we should.
I know.
And that's.
Sorry, I know it's different. I understand. That's why I'm asking in a generic way.
My point of view would be looking forward to kind of stay where we are in the mix, if that makes sense. Like we are going behind to achieve in mathematics across the county and so even moving like a set percentage point.
Yeah, I'm talking about relative to previous year.
So I think like.
We stay on that same, similar trajectory?
Yes.
That should demonstrate that.
Yeah, but.
We're seeing success.
There's a lot of factors, there's a lot of factors in trade that are at play. So if we think about, let's say, one of our scores, we have 90% of kids on our level, on, on staff. We always are constantly having a new influx of kids because we have kids who are, who are newcomers and it's a different, so each year is a different cohort. So we just have to be, like, I think we should be maintaining our spot relative to how others are doing too.
I was gonna say, I worry about.
But it's difficult to like vote for year to year. One of the things is also because if you look at our data that follows kind of a county, then you know the assessment has changed. Like if we're doing the exact same thing, trend wise, what others do. So it's just, all of that's part of the conversation.
Right, I do think, you know, our, our goal is certainly to increase our proficiency for our students in that secondary as we transition into that PSAT, SAT suite where we're looking at the ninth, 10, 11 and the trajectory over that time. We have a, a very high level of student proficiency in ELA and not as high in math. And those are certainly areas of focus. We've had quite a few conversations about that this year in, in our buildings, in our secondary buildings. But it's just to continue to watch that student growth, but also really focusing on looking at our student groups that are not as successful as our, in our, if we, you know, if we look at our aggregate score, we have student groups who are far underperforming the aggregate. And so obviously we want to ensure that we're pouring our resources and time into studying those groups and ensuring that they're being supported. And that has been a big part of our work. We're talking about the guiding coalition and our work with MSTK12 and how we're ensuring that students are being provided high levels of instruction in ELA and mathematics when it comes to those areas. So yes, our goal is to continue to see an improvement and that is an area we will be studying our, our self over time. I'll enter the caveat, this is the first year we're going to be, that we just took it all digitally. So it'll be really interesting to see. SAT says to us, it's not going to be a blip on the screen, like we factored for that. But we've walked, we watched that happen and we went from Mstep paper and pencil to digital. So it just, it's, it's really challenging when this state continues to give us blips in the screen for how to compare one year to the next. But we are hopeful that we've worked hard to.
But if you compare relative, that.
Yeah.
We have.
It's not consistent year to year. The test is not consistent year to year. It's not a valid test and it's why it's really, though, it's the year, but the PSAT, yeah.
No, I'm taking relative to.
To some. Yes, ranking, yeah, ranking, yeah, that's why I like to lean on ranking more because the test is now standard. Too many folks that come on assumptions about scores, you know, without taking into account the nuances that occur across the county, across the state and with the assessments themselves. And that's where we have to maintain, we have to maintain some, some level of. To your point of tracking PSATs, to SAT, I would much, I'm trusting them more. They're national, they're standardized.
My only concern about PSAT and SAT is it's not the content we teach. It doesn't track the content we teach. PSAT is very flawed, very genuine content compared to what is taught in the.
Could.
Well, it's the standards.
It's a stance, right. It's not a standard.
Back to the ELA standards, the statistics, right.
If it's problem solving, then we, then our students have to do well, because the math curriculum that we shift to is really about problem solving. The question, we should adapt well to, to the SAT, to any standard I'm assessing. So from a math, so where we have Algebra One, Christine has already, partly referenced this, as did Natalie. We, last year, established the Algebra One cohort, which is our Algebra One teachers, part of that conversation. This is high school, this is.
Hell. Eight, nine.
Eight, nine. Okay, so we're calling it, okay. So they, they, they're in the midst of piloting right now. The math review matrix was, and I know this, I didn't even look at you. So this, is this a little familiar to you?
For a break. For a break. Nice call.
Yeah, that's the, that's the matrix slash for bringing that issue.
And then the team did have an opportunity to make any changes, but they did not. They had an opportunity to review that and see if this has been our context. It is, it's going to be the Algebra One cohort, just to give you a little perspective. And I think Nancy asked the question on this. I think we talked about it probably the last morning. But it used to be that we would have many algebra teachers, but they would each have like one section. And so now we're really, really trying to have a quote of our high schools, how do we get people together that really want to work on a course? And so that they teach multiple sections. And so we're firmly aware of how the kids are doing. So that's the cohort idea. It's really bringing that group together to, this is a group that wants to be dedicated to building algebra.
In both the middle schools and the high schools.
Yeah, but the middle schools, it just gave great teachers.
Yeah.
That last bullet point is an important one because we, one of the other promises that we made was that we were going to be more vigorous. We were working towards embedding the, the standards in math eight. And that work has taken place this year. You can see really the partnership with Michigan Math Science Network. So that work has, has been done. And then here's the recommendation. You can see the four curricular, curricula, excuse me, that were looked at and through that district review matrix. See the four there.
And the problem is sometimes if all the children's responses are living in technology, the teacher can't make choices. So you see examples of the board and you come into observe in algebra class where the kids are doing and putting their thinking up on the whiteboard. Now the teacher knows instantly who needs feedback and what feedback might they give. So that's a really, that might sound like, oh, is that just a philosophical thing? It's actually a teaching learning imperative, but you can see the difference.
So we'll have, the team has recommended Algebra One. Algebra One, three goals that were identified. In a common measure.
Good question. So the Algebra One in eighth grade will have additional units, whereas this Algebra One in ninth grade.
The standards will be incorporated and throughout the.
So not additional units, but within the unit you have additional stuff. What, 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 next, wait. They're, they're working on what that looks like, but they know that they're going to need to embed components of eighth grade math into the honors Algebra One in eighth grade because those students, we went from seventh grade math to honors Algebra One. Whereas students who are rolling into Algebra One in ninth grade will have had an eighth grade math. So there, there will be a difference in that.
And I, I want to be clear, make sure, ready to take it's comfortable. Mstep is not listed as a, as a measure. We have PSAT, SAT, NNWBA. And so, so the team is saying that is how we're going to measure when we're successful.
So it's not a good measure?
It's not valid, the national test is not valid.
No, just.
Yeah, I think it's, it's not so much it's not a good measure, it's those are bad measures.
Okay. The reason I ask you this question is, and I was told, and I could be wrong because I am not, I am not an educator. I was told Mstep goes with what are the standards required by the state of Michigan. Whereas this PSAD is just general problem solving. Is that appropriate way of explaining?
Also, Michigan adopted the Common Core standards.
Right.
So it's a measurement of high school math standard, so.
And just PSAT, SAT focus on those games?
I don't know if that's the name they're using, but. I don't know, but I have personally cross-watched that test to the, I, I can't, I can't answer that. I mean, I have personally gone through that. I'm sure we can dig and kind of find out exactly what they're based off of.
I'm sure.
And their math. It would be as based on.
Has I been somewhere, I'm sure.
Because I mean, the state of Michigan adopted it as the required assessment for, for.
For. For high school.
For, well, no, for eighth, ninth, right, so, as well. So, the state of Michigan has done some sort of, okay, or maybe they haven't. But the state of Michigan adopted it as a measure.
So I guess, it's a question to you, uh, from us, is which one is a better measure of understanding how our students are doing with the curriculum that they've looked?
My perspective is that the PSAT and SAT provides us with two things. One, the SAT is a collegiate exam and so we're thinking about collegiate readiness for our students. That's an important measure for us, it's used externally. So, I value that, um, I value that, I won't say highly, just, I value that, I think that's important for us. I also believe because it is connected, right, to the suite of assessments in nine through, over eight through eleven, it provides us as a district with a through line of consistency based on that, that measure, that data measurement, which allows us to be able to see a student over time progress. So, for that reason, I, I think it's a very useful.
It's more closer to a, a measure of growth over time, it should, I think, has to be, it has to be something that changes.
It's not perfect, yeah, but it, it is not much.
I, I'm fine with whichever way we decide, but, yeah. So my, my question again, like I just asked you, is MSTAT covers the content that was required by the Michigan curriculum? Whereas this PSAD, I don't know if that is true, I just, I read somewhere.
Well, to your point, the state required, that's the state same shit test.
So that, this is the MSTAT that the state, right, but the state is right, and this is, they use the PSAT in place of...
So they don't use MSTAT anymore?
There's still seven and eighth grade of math in it.
So, grade to last.
Seven and eighth grade, yeah.
And then we, then we switched to the PSAT.
So they take the MSTAT in eighth grade for other subjects, for math and...
So I, and I know we're new with N W D A this year, um, so as you look at those two tests, what are you gonna look to N W D A talents versus SAT?
I think one is basically this national norm, so we'll be able to see that. Um, I think we have to learn more, to be honest.
So we're still playing with that one.
I think we have to learn how to interpret the reports.
I think one of the, one of the tools that comes with N W D A is, once we have it, so right now, this year it's been, hasn't been used holisticly in this district this year, right? So we're using it in places to, um, measure some student growth within specific courses. When it's used across the district, it will provide us with a RIT score that looks at the national average. What's the national average? What's the district average? And then what's the student, where's the student? So as a parent, you will be able to see how is your child performing compared to the national average, compared to the district average. And then it, it's given over time, so it will show that student growth. It will also give you an anticipated growth based on the national average for your child. So it kind of helps to set a goal of your child growing. Now, I, have, being a parent and having received that score and, and my child not meeting those goals, I, you know, I was just asked the question, was this really neat, is it growing and learning? But it is just, again, another measurement tool, so as we put together a suite of measurements, which is what we're talking about doing.
Right.
It gives us another place to look at how we're nationally stacking up student achievement.
Well, are we carrying this deck to the, that board meeting? This is for us or is this for you? Okay. It would be dependent, if you want, if you'd like us to share it, we can. It was initially, if everybody think, for a portion, it would be hurt to share.
I think we should, I do have a question about...
I thought we had to do the first part about, like, our learning about the past, but if you want to share information of the...
I think we should.
Like the last year's slides?
The roles.
I, I feel like even the first one.
I think we're a learning organization, if you should show them we're a learning organization.
I think we should.
But the reason I ask that is with N W D A, if it's more exploratory for us, I would put, and your primary focus is gonna be on that PSAT, SAT, I would, since this is in writing, and I, we're showing it to the public, I would put exploratory around W, um, N W D A because, and to your point, we don't have a lot of, we don't track it, we're not sure how we're gonna use it, but we think it's interesting and we want it to work.
But what's, what is the goal for the administration with N W D A? Is it, is it to pretty much administer for all our students and...
Yeah, eventually, yeah. So we're hoping for next year.
Next year.
At first, yeah.
So next year, every sixth grader will start and then go on to every sixth. Just do the...
And understanding too, so I know it's been a number of years since our board has talked about big data, but recognizing that standardized assessments will oft, will always only tell one small portion of the story. So, I know they're not as, um, maybe at your level fashionable to talk about, but the classroom assessments that we're actually seeing students making and teachers are studying student work is where the changes are made. Teachers will be seeing how did, how did this child do on this one or two problems versus on a national standardized assessment. I just, I want to keep repeating that because that is the thing that makes teaching a lot stronger and that's to help kids improve. Um, so just using, recognizing like more of the staff is doing, um, in professional learning, um, to notice the work, so that we can become decision makers about that. That's actually from like, I mean, that's what's happening in classroom learning. So I just...
No, but the ELA conversation, yeah. The ELA conversation we had at Troy High, that, that was a fascinating conversation to watch because, because that's exactly what the group of teachers were doing. They were like, okay, this was our first year piloting this, we saw students were shaky about choice, we gave them too much choice in the beginning, we didn't give them the guardrails, I reversed it this year and tightened it from the beginning and then the kids were ready to fly. You know, they understood kind of what the guidelines were and I think that, that is really...
We want them responding all the time to what's happening in the classroom.
Quick question about N W D A, how often do we administer that?
So, three times a year. So we actually are part of, um, so a mixture of math is also a study. Um, basically our implementation force, um, that hopefully mentioned, we use this to case study, um, so...
It's not like a day for everybody, right? Each student picks it at a different time?
But, and the way that N W D A should work is it's, um, an on-time test and so the goal is for students to be able to do it in a class period, but that's sometime they can have it. It's one class period, it's in the fall, in the winter, it's our...
Two times. But all the students take it at the same time or they pick it up there?
There's normally windows, we get a teacher sometime in this ten-day window, schedule a class period.
And then there's windows to be included in the norm.
Is, is the goal for you to understand the data or for you to share with the student and the parents also? What's your...
You know, hide, you know, hide.
No.
Our goal would be to do both, right? And to hopefully be able to do both fairly simultaneously, because it's difficult to share it with parents when you don't know how to talk about it.
Right.
But it's happened in many districts, right? When you adopt a new standardized assessment, it's difficult, right?
Should be honest.
That's a curious question.
Right. I think that's a good question.
We're trying to figure out how to do this, and it's like, we're honest about the way, it's already long time. Really helpful, thank you. Um, do you guys want to take that quick break?
Yes.
Do you want to take it now, please, or...
Thank you, ladies. Appreciate it.
Yeah, they have still love this.
Oh, good.
It's love this. You know, every time I see it, I'm just so proud of how you did this, this is so cool.
God, I'm so glad.
It's such a good, and to tie it back to the... It's been, I'm missing that one piece before I sent you that, that, Christine, I think together, uh, sort of practice. It's a way of, like, it's, it's, you, I can't give you, I can't give you access to a module because you have to be, you have to be in, but, so what I have somebody doing is, doing a recording of going through a module. So you may see that, yeah, that's great, it's about five minutes. So you'll get a flavor for what it is, but I'm waiting on Maggie to get that phone, so she should have that to me. If not, she'll get it anyway.
Is that a order?
Bravo.
Is that a order?
Uh, that was order from several, yeah. Couple of years ago, actually. I was gonna say, that's a couple of years ago already? He's four now. He's four and... So Carolina's a long way to go and they're... It's far, yeah, I've just driven there. It's far, hell, that's a, a hall, it is. Even staying over in Natsville is, you know...
I said somebody was like...
Two solid days.
Yeah, and he's like, well, let's just meet up and then like, look, like, I'm like, isn't that just a meetup? It's like, there's no meeting.
Yes, New York City.
We're just saving our, I don't really get right to those standards and I'm like, I just want to go, I'm like, this is...
Yeah, you know, we're gonna be answering, yeah, that's not, we went to New York, that was our halfway point. It's an eight-hour survey. It was fun. We have a problem. No, it was, it was, um, uh, destined for, uh, we had high winds and some major thunderstorms coming through at night and, um, so we wanted to be able to really enjoy the beach. So I can tell by the, the water is closed and the first two days coming in was fun. We can get pictures of ourselves on the beach just standing on the beach. You know, like, so finally the last night, we got into the beautiful ocean and I, and I walked us almost two miles on the beach just to enjoy it. So in there, uh, we, we, that even... As you said, I think, even just what I thought, it's like a lot of money. And it's just rich, and, yeah, I, I go back with any...
She had to work here, I wasn't watching, I was making, I was just like, oh, geez. I had a little experience in Alaska.
But the way was that it tested, um, and it was, it was very, oh, you mean, yeah. And really, same passion, it was a destination, but it was huge. So, I don't think you'd remember.
No, that's, she's, she was the...
I, I didn't even know, like, you said, I'm here.
I don't, I don't, just...
Yeah, it's, it's, it's such a, just a place with a waste of money. Yeah, no, I, I think that, like, tax the rich, tax the rich, tax the rich. It's just like, uh, nobody should spend a million, you know. But they, it was funny, they had an negotiating rate app that less than a year. And they, they were like, it's four hundred and thirty-five dollars. So, so like, all of the free lunch, the eating for the, you know, the... And they were like, I'm paying four hundred and thirty-five dollars. It was real dollars, they got, like, we think we were paying those, these twenty thousand dollars flowers. And how was there anything else? It was, you just, you know, hearing that, like, they're, they're, you know, five years and she's like, oh. So it's funny, you know, for us, it's like, it started on Friday and everyone was walking back and they had, you know, these... And then traveling, you know, singing, wailing, or, and we have weddings now, uh, receptions, uh, at the wedding. They're like, they're really, they're trying to pretend that you're like, you're like the reception and they have, they have a man, um, so you have to get out of the bar and then suddenly you have...
You were talking about the other...
Just each...
It was interesting, like, we can't...
And to have, you know, I think it's been a few years, a usual destination, like, you know. I knew we did well on this, so, really, I was, I...
If we can only go to this point, we're gonna somebody person for...
The rest was like, why did it have to work?
Ninety-seven. Yeah, football, that's what I was, that was my hope, like, yes, we did, I was a pitcher, we did the...
Not my fault.
No. Um, it was, yeah.
Thank you.
We're, they, they, right, just bold, they're, they're, she's, she's... The money was, you know, so, and I think she drove, you know, so, so I'm, I'm sure that they were... They're not hurting, they're respecting, they're cautious, right? So, I think they, you know, want to demonstrate that, you know, it's a study. They should, like, quite a little show, just, yes. I said Karen and I asked you to go, probably, I heard eight thousand dollars. But, because, you know, you wear it to law, because I have to, she's got a... That's three hundred dollars and we're in for three, we have ten of us, like, that's, that's another club, right? They had, they had the grid set up on the beach and they lined up the center aisle, blocking side out, then four wings. So we looked at that and that, you know, so those were out of... They were, uh, three, four thousand dollars in flowers. It was just, one of those things, I mean, I, 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 I picked up, I did some correspondence and I say, I was not voting for her. And, 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 well, I could tell her, I didn't know how to say it. But it was morally wrong to spend the money the ladies spent. I said, yeah, because, because, like, there was one, there was, you know, a little, you know, a kid.
So it's, they do some of the batteries.
It was at, at the Thompson's or something, at the Thompson's, that, that one, that one had to be more than a hundred thousand. I was waiting for her outside, I moved, uh, okay. Um, Oakland Schools Board of Education election, so we have to pick two candidates, correct? And then, right to, and then we need to have someone who's willing to go to Miami and cast the vote.
All right, can I vote? Scott Hock, you wanna go?
Are you gonna do it, Mr. Hock?
I'm gonna say I'm...
Uh...
Oh, I'm not here, it's out.
I was on to the past, too.
I know, I was gonna say, that's the Monday hour commencement.
It's because I'm receiving showcase, no.
Evening, six o'clock, I think.
Five, it was five thirty. Okay, that's a good excuse.
Yeah, it's a good excuse.
I don't care, we don't want...
I, I, I love it, yeah.
Well, it's important here.
I know, I'm just saying, I can't go, I'm not listening, because I'm receiving showcase for that.
No, you shouldn't.
She's like a whole P D here.
Yeah.
You show up to vote?
Show, you go. Unless they don't get a majority and then you're gonna say they're wrong, they have to pay taxes. I have no idea why I have to be a person, it is an utter risk. It, it took, it takes you longer to drive there than it does to actually cast the vote. It's the, I've done it twice and it, I, it infuriates me that I lost that time in my life.
I, if you're looking for a recommendation, I would, I'd recommend my kids.
Yeah, that's, I'll say a little too...
Might help with that.
Since it's five thirty, it's all work, five thirty, it is...
Yeah, five thirty, you said thirty.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you want to take it, I'm not gonna argue.
You want to take, I'll be the manager, so he'll be the man and I can be the manager, something doesn't happen, something can happen.
Thank you, Bert.
The fan, yeah. For thirteen years, I'm not sure that that board has done anything to help us with anything at all, so.
So there are four of them.
So there are four of them and I, I agree with you, I mean, like, from my perspective, Carol, I think Steve... So there are four of them and I, I agree with you, I mean, like, from my perspective, Carol, I think Steve seems to be.
Hardly most of them.
I was a really hard worker, I witnessed, if I did, if somebody rose up, just because Mark is, um, he's having physical complications.
Not anymore. Well, I'll be this.
Awesome.
And by the year ago, I thought he was not gonna know who's Lord, but, uh, nobody, I don't think anybody knows advocacy and people that count, whether it's in Lansing or Oregon, Washington.
He's very knowledgeable.
Extremely knowledgeable.
I was gonna say, he's a wealth of knowledge, that's what I had known.
And they know him on a first name basis and he trusts his judgment, I trust his judgment.
So it's never been a paper that, those are two. So we need a res, the bottom resolution.
A resolution, a resolution in there, anyway.
Okay, so, can we just, can, uh, just introduce Phil's names and then we'll just read it that way? Okay, so, cats and, uh, okay, that's good. Um, the deep reef. Okay, so I have a list of things on the deep reef and, um.
Hey, Rick, come join us.
Yeah, if you wanna join us, well, we're gonna talk about some.
I feel like these things are all things of the past.
And all, all three of you, you're like, yeah, they're like, the last thing you wanna do. But you're coming up, coming up, this, we, we wanted to share out, you know?
Just make sure your things ain't up.
That's not a problem.
We got an order to the bank. I insist.
You can help be a part of the conversation, you can get just a plucker or a email.
Okay, so I wrote down, um, I sent a note out to everybody who went and said, send me anything that you want, um, that you think you, we wanted to talk about it, this just because it's, you know, it's a significant expense for us to go. So we wanted to make sure that we shared out with everybody so people are comfortable. So there, there were actually, um, there were quite a few very interesting presentations this year. Um, I, I would say that's much more than what I saw, it's maybe a few years ago.
Yeah, cause there was more variety.
Yeah. Um, okay, and I do have. Okay, so there were, there were two districts that were, that we were intrigued enough by that we're wondering whether they're worth a filter from somebody here to go see. Um, and I'll just yammer and you jump in and you jump in and you jump in, it was, you know, anything would be. Um, and, uh, one of them was, uh, just unfortunately Nancy's not here and we'd like her to talk about it, she's the only one who went to this one. But when we looked at the materials, it was really interesting, but it's a, it's a district in Oklahoma that is, um, doing an amazing job of sort of tracking, um, career readiness, integration, similar to the CAP program, but it, uh, on steroids. You're bringing area companies involved in and providing opportunities, internship opportunities for students. Um, there's, uh, um, different focal areas in high school that you can focus on and, and accomplish some of your, you can do both core and electives through or, uh, what you call it.
They did, they did a really good job on personal curriculum.
Personal curriculum.
Like, that was their, the title of it, but they did a really nice job of, and I think about, I mean, having sit, sat through the Athens designing meetings, like, just that I, there's a real appetite in those rooms about what it looks like to make sure that we are helping students maximize their time in our buildings while simultaneously really giving them real world readiness. And so this district in Oklahoma was really good at saying, like, there are kids who are on that, and we've had this conversation, we talked about like the AP things, like, there's kids who are on that AP track who like, want to take all the APs and, you know, wanna test out the freshman year college. But then there's also kids who are either later bloomers or are more mechanically minded and, so it was exciting.
Or more focused in a specific area.
Yeah, and, and so to be able to say, we, and being that Michigan is such, I mean, we have a lot of mechanical engineering opportunities, we have a lot of medical opportunities, we have a lot of industrial things. And I know that, that this is wrong too. Nancy had all of this all worked out.
But one of the things that struck me was that they, uh, that, that Nancy was talking about anyway, was that, um, they were, they were very adept at identifying different ways of getting the same, um, graduation requirement, right? So, so you had multiple, so sort of, some of the things we were talking about with Michigan Airport, where, where it's like, okay, are, is there a flexible way of meeting those requirements for graduation? And it's a different state, um, so the requirements may be different, but it just struck us that they were, they were actually near a military town and so they also had a lot of, um, they had influx of different, different kids, they had influx of a number of different languages spoken, there were, there were a number of things that were really interesting. They, they were, I would say, they were less, they got a lot of transient kids and they incorporate, but what we were intrigued by was they seemed to have cracked the code on this personal plan and, and, um, you know, they, they sit down with the kids, um, early on and kind of map out those courses and then they have an ability to, to jump tracks if they get into a track and they don't like. So, so it's basically allowing them to be as personalized or as standardized as the student wants. So it, it covered a lot of things that we have talked about as a group and we're like, yeah, might be worth a filter to see what, you know.
It's called Lawton Public School.
Lawton.
It's right next to a military, L A W T O N, I think.
Yeah.
And so, for example, they have these academies or pathways called like Agriculture and Environmental Sciences Academy, Aviation Academy, like he said, they're right next to a military base, so they have a lot of things. And they, kids can go between different academies, but they have a personalized pathway of doing these classes through, um, these academies, they have Engineering Academy, Hospitality and Tourism Academy, Fine Arts Academy, and they start from sixth grade off, not necessarily out of high school. And in middle school, it's not as varied, but they may like include reading materials in an English class that is associated with that pathway, not much more than that, but still they somehow incorporate that pathway. And they have a lot of internships and all this, uh, too, that you can go into some, um, elementary base or somewhere to get them some.
Income, all the companies surrounding here. So it's not so, like, we didn't look at, say, oh, we should adopt everything they're doing wholesale, but we just said, you know, we found that here's a, here's a test bed where if you want, you, you may, they're coming out of there doing something that they're not doing, but they simulated that on you.
Have good presentation.
For inspiration somewhere that would look like an area that, that might be really interesting.
Yeah, they have a middle school curriculum catalog. And a high school curriculum curriculum too, if you want to. Uh, in the presentation.
In the presentation.
All the presentation.
Yeah, so we can get that and it'd be, uh, exciting. Um, and then the other, um, sort of example that we, we looked and said, you can fly here and drive there and then fly home from there, because they were, the, it was in, uh, uh, East Texas. And it was, it, so it was, we actually looked to say, couldn't we do this, it's a four hour drive from one place to the other, but, um, this is a, a place that has completely revamped food service. So they have, they, they have a, um, I, I was talking very about this today, they have actually a four acre farm, um, that they, that, um, the kids have filters out to the farm to understand how it works. They have, they incorporate the food from the farm into the, into the cafeteria meals and I know we, we wouldn't do that with, with the farm, but we, this is something where we could, there definitely are farms that we could coordinate with the new street area, you know, with produce. But the primary thing that we were intrigued by, um, was that they have their own chef that they hired, um, they do everything in-house now, they, they brought it in-house from a big farm, uh, big food company. So they brought it back in-house and then, um, they're, they're, they've done a really cool job of incorporating it into curriculum. Um, they, they have just converted a bus into a food truck and, and, and we were sitting here going, you know, we.
Couldn't call it a food truck.
Couldn't call it a food truck, it was like a, uh, it was like a mobile food. You had to call it something else, you couldn't call it, but they were, they was laughing about it as they went through, but, but, um, so the assistant superintendent who, who this turned into his baby, he kind of inherited it, was, what he was taking is true, but, um, but they were, it was very interesting to me because they, they were talking about the Texas food that they, that they serve and how the chef interacts with the kids. And it's, and it reminded me, the chef reminded me of our SROs, like John Julie, like John Julie was so good about sort of, everybody knew who he was, you know, ever, he, he could step into any building and they were knowing that chef sounds like, that, she's out there, she's in the building, they're trying new things, they're, they're experimenting with foods and, and, uh, the, um, they, they incorporate the food truck into curriculum in terms of understanding, you know, um, the operations of it as well as the culinary parts, part of it.
The kids promote, trap the food there.
District was about, uh, about eight thousand, I think.
Eight or, eight or nine thousand, so it was not significantly, so.
No, no, that's why we were tuned both of these schools where we had food samples, they were, yeah, I think the Lawton was, Lawton, is it a little bigger than us, maybe Lawton was fourteen thousand? They were both within our realm.
They were both normal sized districts, like they were not.
Yeah.
Like this one, the food isn't like a teen time.
Yeah, fourteen thousand, how did that ever get this?
Fifteen over, you're like, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so anyway, so we'll send something, yeah, I'll send something to, uh.
I don't know about that one, I didn't really.
Yeah, we, we got a church from that, so we'll, we'll send that to you, but, but anyway, it was one of those things where we were like, okay, so we were talking, what they did is they took, um, they had excess funds, they started doing this, um, why would they, they're a much higher, about three hundred use lunch crowd, I think they were eighty-five percent of three hundred use. It's a rural area.
It was a big cover.
But, um, but they started looking at universal lunch, the amount of income they had and then started figuring out, you know what, we can do this ourselves and we can, we can kind of rethink the way we present food to kids, uh, and, and incorporate, how do we integrate food into their educational experience? So understanding how food is grown and understanding, you know, how it contributes and factoring it into, to curriculum as well, and we just looked and said, if we were thinking of world-class food service delivery, this district did, right? It just was like, it, it was as integrated as you could do and what they're saying is they're, they're actually, they figured out, in some cases, he was saying that they're doing it for less money than everybody would pay.
He was intriguing to me because he was saying, we, they had such a huge amount of free produce lunch that they get like free lunch for all, and they had, he's like, it's, the food was so bad, nobody wanted it, even when it was free, and these were kids who were like getting like food backpacks on the weekends, like, and so they're like, I would rather get the free macaroni and cheese and go hungry at lunch and so by doing this, they like upped their participation, which then actually ups the profit and so like, he was like, we needed to start it with the surplus of money, but then now it's more than covering its costs. And they even, like, there are families that they send food for, like, weekends and stuff, like, they take extras out of what they're making and like package it and send it home to families, so like.
I mean, they, yeah, they, they are much more sophisticated than we would need to be, they are very impressive.
The things that they were doing, it was like, it was, it was mind boggling that they could do it on, yeah, food service project, like, they're using it all the way.
They have employees that, that tend the farm and then they can cover that under a food service contract, you know, that's a food service worker. So it was very interesting because they essentially said, this is the amount of money we have, how can we put this to work and rethink what we do with food service? So, and, and again, not saying we have to do what they're doing wholesale, but I think that if we wanna be, like, if we do create some kind of task force to think about alternatives, this would be a great model to examine, to understand and, and that's, you know, as we were looking at, like, we need somebody like you to actually look at the mechanics of it and the finances of it to say, does this make sense or does it not, not make sense? Because we don't know enough, you know, we don't know enough to get it working, but definitely our team, you know, um.
Gail would.
If Gail were to go down there and, you know, look at it, that would be, we would understand, so, so those were the two kind of, um, sort of awe inspiring examples that we saw presentations from. Um, do you wanna talk about, you guys wanna talk about transportation and peer court?
Yeah, so, um.
Peer, peer court, which is.
Yes, so, um, so peer court is something that a school, I hate, Rich, I'll let you be shy. But the, um, is a school that's using, like, their, like, criminal justice class, you train the kids and then they're doing, when you think about like resorted practices, so what are the things? So having kids who have, so kind of a step up of peer mediation, but like, what does it look like to have kids be a part of the discipline process? And so, uh, this, this week when I was driving and, um, cause Nathan's getting his hours in, so he drives me to school every day, and.
Those terrifying three minutes of the night.
Yeah, he's getting much better though, but like, I was just like, I'm like, oh, if we can do peer traffic court, like, it would be a amazing thing, like, it's like, you know, there are kids who are sitting there and like, but it, but the school district was just talking about how it, um, cause obviously kids can choose traditional discipline and they don't have to go to peer court, but they were just saying that like, the idea of knowing that you have to like face your peers and then that, like, it helps, um, humanize some of the things, but it also, like, they were talking about just the things that they did under equity, they have some high schoolers go in and take care of some of the middle school disciplines, so now we have close, like, a high schooler, why you were, you know, cheating or whatever, you know, so like, they have a level of offense that is, goes to peer court. But again, it was just a.
Yes, it's a tier three gun.
But it's just that idea of like, when we talk about resorted practices, when you talk about like red pillar work, like, what does it look like to empower kids to really be leaders and then also to kind of catch, and then they were like, it sometimes helps kids catch a vision of the seriousness of something when they have to kind of like, they're set up like a courtroom, so now it's like, oh, this isn't just me, like, oh, the principal doesn't like me. And then everything is on panel, so they're like, it's always three, you go before three people so that you don't have just one person arbitrarily.
You know what I like about that too is that it demonstrates to the offender, right, that, um, I'm disturbing, it's not just what the adults say, it's not a rule written down by an adult, it's like, okay, there's a recognition, my peers are friendly, saying, not cool. And there's probably some value to that, you know, that, I, I would think in some cases, I mean.
So, um, they said they see a lot of truancy cases, they do a lot of truancy.
Baybin too was one of the.
Yes, Baybin, um, you know, so just like some of, anyway, it just, it was really intriguing to me and I thought that it might be worth reaching out, especially as we look at making resorted practices more and more less. Was either Colorado or Massachusetts. Because the transportation people were massive Maryland, like, it's, you sit and you go to.
Yeah, you're right, it's Bush, but.
It was, okay, it was Colorado, okay. Um, and then the transportation one, that was a much bigger district than ours, but they were, like, everyone else was a bus shortage, but they were saying they, they moved most of their special ed transportation, especially the, like, smaller groupings to vans. And so they got vans that they then put, you know, markings on so people know that it's students, but they were saying it allowed them to hire drivers who didn't have a bus driver's license, like, you don't need all of the licensing and then when they were doing that, they could then be earning their, like, bus driver's license, but they could do it with a lower level chauffeur's license than a full-fledged bus.
C D L.
Um, but I was just thinking in terms of like, when we're running shuttles between schools or do, like, when there's only three or four kids on something, like, what's it look like to, to have, add a couple of vans to our fleet that can do some of the transportation? And so anyway, they were just talking about the, the immense way that that opened up flexibility. And then the other thing was a couple of districts were talking about, um, that they bought bus passes for their high schoolers. So their high schoolers were riding the equivalent, they were riding public transportation and then they were only using school transportation for K eight, I'm special ed. And so as, as the smart buses moving more and more routes into Troy and Manchester, like, I just wonder if, considering we have so many kids who play sports and like can't do transportation, yeah, like, is there a way to partner with smart for maybe some of the transportation needs as they are looking to increase their presence in this area? So it was just, I feel like we, transportation has been a standstill for so long, so just those, I got a couple of places to be curious about and not that it would need a change, need a change, but.
But the vans, um.
The van one sounded, cause he was just like, they didn't have enough, like, they, they just didn't have enough drivers who were qualified or they didn't have, and they had a bunch of, cause it's one of those districts where they have to bus, like, it's. of, because it's one of those districts where they have to bus, like, it's, there's certain districts where it's like really odd the way they have to like go across the city, and so they were like, we only have five kids over here, just cost effective to send a bus to go get those, but especially special, but he was like, the special means, because he's, he's like, I'm not sending a whole bus for five kids.
Okay, um coordination with the N E A to discuss authentic assessments. Okay, so I went to a session, that was actually sponsored by the N E A, and they talked about, um, they went through and talked about everything that we've been talking about, which is, we need to move towards more project based learning, um, we need to give kids more ownership and we have agency over how they're learning, and we need to move away from, you know, coloring bullet points or coloring bubbles on a test to to more culinary or um. Culinary, you know, culinary is the word I wanted, culinary, and divorce, larger projects, you know, that kind of thing. And so I had a conversation with uh with them near the end where, because they were, their assumption as they were presenting to us is that all of you, you people are concerned about pride about standardized test scores, and so you're in the way of us moving in this direction, and I raised my hand and said, uh, it's kind of the other way around, you know, that that the biggest challenge is identifying, they're convincing some of our teachers that they need to change their craft, you know, and that they can't be really comfortable in what they're doing, uh, because the world's changing really rapidly right now, and we need to, you know, stay up. And um, so we had a really good conversation about it, and they said, um, you know, I said, do you, my question to them was, are you communicating to your members on a national basis that this is an important transition we have to be making, because right now it's coming down a little from administration, and they have attempted to push back, and so if it's coming, it's bubbling up from your national organization, that might be a really powerful, you know, connection. And they said, they'd be willing to come in and actually present or coordinate with our P D and have the N E A come in and talk about things that they've learned, so um I, and and they said, would you let us do that? I said, absolutely, it's gotta be a blast if you want to come in to try and do that. So do you want me to try to, I think your dad, like, do you want me to try to connect you to somebody, and maybe this, maybe there's a, we can figure out something for the August?
Yeah.
Um, you know, the Wacabak P D, and maybe they take a session, or maybe they're a keynote speaker in some way, um, but I just thought, and yeah, 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 the, so, but I thought that, I I think that might be really good for us, right? Rich, I already talked about this, yeah, um, but, so I will reach back out to them and see if they're interested in coming in, because I think that that's a really cool way to partner with the National Education Association to talk about kind of a common goal, a common interest, and a recognition, a common need for change. I mean, because they, when they went through their setup, they went through all the academic research saying, this is how we need to ship, this is why it's important, this is why it needs to increase engagement, all the things that you say all the time, and it's like, so you're going, okay, this is great, but that's not what's, we're struggling with, so, okay, okay, so we can do that one. Um, the other one that I went to from the N E A was, and I want to see if anybody's eyes light up, Rick Stiggins, does anybody know who Rick Stiggins is?
Yeah, sure.
He can, and spoke, and he had a whole thing around giving our kids the gift of confidence, and he's talking, there's a crisis in confidence of our kids right now, and talked about, he had a whole, he's, a lot of stuff around, around making sure that you provide opportunities for kids to succeed at some level, because that success then breeds initial success. Um, but I I mostly just brought that in because everybody in the room was like, so honored to meet you, I'm like, I don't know. He was a really good speaker, but I.
He did a lot of words in the interview screen, yeah, a few years ago, and feedback, and.
Okay. Yeah, so so if you want me to, I'll send, I'll send his deck, so you can look at it, because it was an interesting talk as we went through, and 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 it really aligned with a lot of data around teens right now, and probably aligns perfectly with what I haven't started reading, because that person's talking about, he's talking about the increases in anxiety and what causes it in ways of ways of counterbalance, so, so it seems like it may be very topical to share that, so, okay. Um, experiential learning business, so, so we have very interesting, you know, the NOLA is one hundred percent charter schools, they're all nonprofits, but but I I suspend my, you know, my attitude, and and a lot of it is that we can learn, and we actually have a very interesting, it was a turnaround school, and it was a very interesting team that had turned it around, and and I I I really liked the the C E O of that, of that particular school, but um when we toured, and you folks can jump in if there's any things you want to share, but one of, there are a couple of things I thought were really important they did in school. One of the things they did is, all the classrooms are named after universities and colleges in our country, just hanging in the, you know, the hall, anytime there's an alum from their school that went to that school, there's a flag, they have, they have a flag for their school, they attach a flag underneath that so that the kids know that someone from this school went to that university.
That's cool.
And and it was like, you know, for for their kids, where a lot of them are going to be first gen college students, it's a really big deal. For ours, we'd have a lot of flags, but I thought, that's a really neat thing for the, you know, for a sixth, seventh, eighth grader to say, these are universities named, I'm seeing the universities, that it's setting expectations, and they're realistic because there are flags hanging, so I know kids who are just like me, who walk these halls, went to those schools. So that was just a little tidbit that I saw that was cool. The other thing that I wanted to talk about was, um, they have a groundwater garden walk when they redid their, when they redid their their playground, and it's, it is a, it's essentially a, like a runoff, um, and and it's very pretty, but it has, um, as you, there's a walk that goes around it, and there are flagrants that explain what we're looking at, so the elementary kids, and they use it, you know, for science classes, to understand how water goes back into the environment, and they talk about conservation of water, they talk about contamination with wastewater coming in, and.
Finding.
Pardon me.
Finding.
Well, they are, yeah, and 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 it's a, and when we asked about maintenance, he said, once you establish it, it's really, it's a self sustaining area, it doesn't require a lot of upkeep, but if, uh, before I die, we actually sell section one, and and I'd love for us to use some of the proceeds from that to look at, saying, can we bring some of these national areas near our elementary schools and and explore, but so we have a model that, you know, we can, we can actually understand it from them, and obviously in NOLA, um, groundwater runoff, it's a really important thing, right? But but I think that's.
Also, I think.
Is it, well, to me, anything, anything like that, I love examples like that where our buildings become examples of science, right? So I begin to understand the world around me with this thing that's right next to my sweet spot, right? And then this, they did a really pretty job of integrating it into the grounds and and, you know, had separated from the law fields and stuff like that, like they had, they put indigenous plants in there, and um, and then again, kind of walked through, they had a plaque talking about how the city gets rid of their waste and, you know, things like that, so, um, and they said they'll take the science classes out there for, is there anything else?
Is this for a swamp?
I know, I was gonna say, since we're gonna just put three hundred thousand dollars in the stopping our, our cats from sinking into the swamp.
Hey, they are, they are also on the.
They're not much different.
Yeah, yeah, they're unders, yeah.
New Orleans.
Yeah, it was all of New Orleans. Okay, is there anything else from that site visit that?
Um, the, the only thing is the other side where we had of the kids who are, it's like an alternative school, it wasn't so impressive because of stuff, but the fact that they um, they have a school specifically, I think New Orleans has these charter schools that are kind of for a particular purpose for each one of them and so.
This one was almost, it was explicit, explicitly for kids who had been expelled from all, all the other schools. So you've got, you, everyone, everybody coming into there was at the bottom of their, you know, um, bottom of their self at that point, and they had some really good outcomes they've been able to successfully do, but what struck us was I sent a text to Angela over there, I'm like, I'm really proud of you guys, this is like, I want to brag about what you do, because it was like the, they were talking about some of the things that they had tried, and were like, we're doing all of that, and we're doing it in space. So I think the main thing from that visit was, we're doing a lot.
We're doing better.
We're doing better, yeah, but that's, you know, that's what she texted me, that is that they were presenting at the alternative high school, um, presentation of North, and and, you know, what Eric Plus said about, um, he, you know, came back saying he felt grateful, right, but he, that when he listened to all his colleagues from other, other districts saying forgotten, ignored, you know, cast aside, and he said, you know, that is not what we are in this district, so, and it was very interesting, and I think probably the alternative high schools go through that wherever you are, so we just heard the same themes that we need to be here, but if, I, like I said, I did send her a text saying, thank you for everything you do, because it's, it's impressive when you come to another place and you've borrowed your benefits, so, um, anything else?
I have a few, not, uh, the only thing on New Orleans is that, um, because it's a charter school, and any kid can go to any school, um, they have a big busing problem, so they can, they have to bus kids from all over the city to the school that they are chosen to.
Busing is not centralized.
Yes.
Every charter school has to maintain their own bus, you want to talk about a picture of inefficiencies, and so they're crossing each other as they're driving kids to a different district in the city.
Six percent, six percent of their budget goes to bus transportation, is what they said, which is, which is a huge amount, so I don't know what percent goes to our bus thing, but.
And there, there is, there is a central administration with school board in New Orleans, and they do centralize some functions. Why busing, is that a lot of, they, they did, she did say they were talking about coordinating busing, so, um, I might, it's been how many years since they did this, but, go ahead, I'm just getting that sound while you're talking.
Yeah, I, uh, did you want to talk about the, the loss of the social media?
Oh, no, talk about that, I forgot about that, yeah.
So we did go to, go to a legal session where the legal, um, offices, uh, what's the, how do you say it? They're the ones who are actually apparently suing in representing the school districts against social media companies and the R that they have brought to the school, um, schools, and there was talk about, um, their districts from, like, I think it's from Seattle, New York, all of those areas, and they were talking about Michigan, some districts joining, um, that lawsuit as well, do you hear about that?
Yeah, they, they've been, I've received the, you know, the joint class action.
Yeah, I don't know if it is class action yet, but I think it is getting.
They're trying to get.
Yeah, there is certain amount of time that is going to.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
So it is about how social media companies have, um, have their algorithms that would cause harm to the students, and then the districts now have to take care of the cost of the harm that they have caused to the students.
It's also like.
She gets to the groundy point.
We actually have that invitation to participate, and that would be sort of there, I can get Rich on getting a legal request for a legal invitation, um, I read it, I didn't know what it was, I kind of dismissed it, but.
Nancy went to the summer.
Nancy.
Yeah, yeah, the same was so down, like, it was, it was like, potential, yeah.
Getting rid of.
That's right.
Because there's really so much, so many things you.
Yes, so it's definitely something that, I, I think from what they mentioned was that social media, their algorithms, and how they are making kids hooked on to that and always, I mean, there's like this adrenaline rush whenever you hit CLI or whatever, and that, that causes harm to the students, and then now the schools have to take care of how to bring them back to, from the harm.
Yeah, saying there's, there's plenty of research showing that the, that social media is driving the increase in mental, mental illness, right, and that, so, yeah, we bumped into Brad Van Assie, who's the attorney for N S B, right after that session, and he said the same thing, he's like, there's really no downside, this should probably sign on, if you can sign on.
I don't know if you received it, it's a whole.
Yeah, I think I forgot about that.
No, that's all right. Um, the other sessions I went to, and I think I sent this to you, Chris, is, this was a session in, um, and I actually sent it to Angela as well, Angela Muna, um, this was an Ohio school district, which they used a lot of their S R's money to build this huge STEM facility, um, and then they, part of that STEM org is that they collaborated with the local, um, airport and airport hangar and whatever, and then they are doing, um, they're doing aviation, exactly, and where I bumped into, he is the president of Pilots' Association, or someone, I believe, and he mentioned that there is so much need for, not necessarily just pilots, but even internships in, um, like mechanics and those kind of things, so that's why they built the STEM facility, not necessarily to go into aviation as much, but there's a lot of STEM related activities that can be done, and they, once they built the STEM facility, they started doing these STEM activities all the way from elementary school, and in elementary school, it would just be a book, it's like a coding book, I think, a few books that I have sent, just exposing them, and then they, just these little, I think we do this in our elementary schools as well, we have the maker space all the time, and then in middle school, they go to different things, they go to the, um, it's not planes, it, adults, drone pilot training and all of that, and they give, they take them on three, three of these sessions, and then they can continue on afterward. There is a cost involved for the parents to go beyond that, I guess, but they, but this person was saying that they could, um, there's so much funding available, like all the airline companies, for example, could recruit you as a mechanic, and as you're getting paid as a mechanic, they will use like training on getting on aviation, and then they could get, get enough flight time to get a pilot from these kind of things. And I gave the contact to Angela because this person was looking, apparently, there's a company in Pontiac which does airplane mechanic stuff, and they are looking for interns like that. That's one, and the other one I went to is this A I, artificial intelligence, um, session, A I in education, it was done by University of Texas Austin professor, and I think she is part of the government A I consortium or study. The, um, the session was more about how to get ahead of it, and how to do, and how to, about like how these teachers and are, how educators and teachers are sometimes afraid of A I, shouldn't be and should get ahead of it, but we're all really educational, just more information than anything, and I had that conversation as well.
And then, yeah, and then the last piece, um, one of our keynotes was Tiffany Schreger, who is head of special analytics, um, and he has been involved in a group called, um, I don't know if it was called United, or whether it's, and they created the dignity index, or whether.
Yeah, I think.
So it's a nonprofit called United, and and the focus is really of the nonprofit is, is recognizing how destructive politics has been, the sniping has been to the country preventing us from being able to get things done and work together. And so their goal on a national basis is, uh, they've identified eight levels of dignity, you know, think about how, how you deal with other people, and they have organizations go through this, they've had schools go through it and adopt for, for, we had examples, and I read on their website, their website has tons of material there.
Their website's.
It's really well done, easy find, so I pulled this stuff off today to show everybody, but, um, one of the things that, all he was asking for in the, in the presentation is to go through it, it's kind of walked us through, the idea is, um, you know, you can, you commit to, to how you engage with other people, so the, the one through eight is on this page, and then the explanation is, is right here, you know, as you go through it, but, but the argument is that you have to figure out, we have to figure out as a country how we're going to work together and treat each other, this is actually based on a book by Donna Hicks, um, or it, I don't know, the whole thing is based on that, but it derives from the book called dignity, it's a central role in resolving conflict, so the whole idea is working as a group to resolve conflict, this is mostly, this would be a board action, but it's something that we can think about at any level of the organization, and he, he gave examples of there are independent school boards that have posted this in their boardroom at a large scale and say, we strive to be a five or above organization, right, and and in terms of how we engage with, with anyone. And in terms of how we engage with anyone. And our thought was this might be very interesting to put on the back of the public comment page to kind of talk about why is this important? What are we trying to do? What does that look like to convey yourself at a five or above banner? You know, when you're addressing the board and other people in the room. But again, essentially, it's just putting... It's putting a sign up to say to everybody, we may not be perfect. This is what we're trying to do as an organization. This is what we strive for. They had examples within that he showed us where elementary schools had adopted the one through the... This and then actually wrote as a team, wrote, what does this, each of these look like in the classroom? Right? And I was looking to see if that was on the website. I'm sure if I emailed them, they'd send it. But they were beautifully done. I mean, it was like they were written as a fourth or fifth grader, but you looked at it and went, they understand. They get it, you know? But the idea was to help kids understand how do you engage with someone who disagrees with you? How do you engage with someone that you're other than you? And it's not... I'm not here to say we need to introduce another program, you know, for SEL. But I would suggest to the rest of the board that I think it... I would love to have this posted and integrate this into our meetings as a sort of a... Something that we strive to do as a commitment as a board.
I think it ties to when we talked about one of our goals is to model a banner. Like, we want to think about how we're modeling ourselves to the community. And one of the things that I appreciated about his presentation, he was like, I am not perfect at this. I am not going to pretend that I'm always talking. You know, he was very honest and he said that when they developed it, it was more for assessment so that they could like be mindful of the way other people... And he was like, but it has a mirroring effect. Like, the more that you think about it and just having it, the weirdest of it, that you then really start living it. Because all of a sudden, you catch yourself and you're like, ooh, okay. And then you can, you know, sort of...
He said, everybody adopts this to fix other people and then you realize you're too. It's like, oh, no, I got to fix myself here too. And I love that. I thought that was a really good way to think about it. And it... And he did put up examples of, okay, here's a dialogue. Would you say that that's a one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight? And then the crowd is like, you know, trying to help you go say it's this, that. And then it's like, well, we classify it here. And here's why. Yeah, here's... Here's... And...
Desmond Tucci is always a hate.
Yeah. Right? But I love that idea. He said, I love this. This is great. I can show you how to behave and then you go, oh, it's me. It's me. I got it fixed. So, he was an excellent speaker. I wish he spoke for about forty-five minutes. I wish we had it longer. It was really good. And especially coming out of Special Olympics and talking about how important it is for inclusion and talking about this is treating every human being with dignity and saying that, you know, that... He kind of started with this idea of any human being from an ability perspective, but then quickly morphed into this is about you just don't agree with me, you know? And to recognize that if we're going to engage and we're going to have a discussion about something that we disagree on and that we agree, both parties agree, we're going to treat each other at five or above. And then if we're not, we'll all be the first down, right? You know? So, that was a really worthwhile conversation. I just thought it was powerful of it. And I didn't realize that it was based on the book until today. I saw the book and I thought, oh, I can get that. So, the reading was... But let's get through this spectacular book. And then we can see. So, okay. So, is there anything else that I forgot? Maybe more than anyone to know, but it was a worthwhile conference. There were a lot of really good conversations that we had afterwards. Okay. So, the last thing I've got is word learning. And I'm going to be honest, I'm very... Thank you. People want to talk about words or do you want to pass?
The only thing I want to say, because I think it ties well to the dignity index.
Yeah.
Is that, yeah. Like, I think that those couple of chapters about like being mindful that like... Because he was like, the first part of the book is like ideal situations.
Right.
And then just the idea that like not everybody, we're not walking into ideal situations. And so, you know, treating people with dignity, when you would prefer to not. I just thought it was a really nice... I thought it was a nice narrative or tie back to the dignity index.
I like...
I just remember...
Yeah.
And I don't know if there need to stay for a discussion for a second. But no, my reason is because I had other, other that I wanted it.
Oh, no.
So, if we could do other, other first and then...
And then to chat about...
Yeah.
And that's, I mean, we don't have to talk about it. I just wanted to say I thought that that was...
Okay. We'll do other, other.
I was fixing the form. I feel for the way I was trying to look at it. So, if you have any ways to summarize it, like a half page?
Did it all on?
Do you have any ideas on like what?
I think we dumped almost everything from the policy book.
Yeah. I think there's a couple...
It sets the tone. You know, like it sets a very negative tone. Like, you have all your nice things and then you read the policy out.
Well, a lot of it was difficult to do. So, I think there's a couple of them I would like to keep, but it's still... There's only a top eight to put on there. Like this, I don't know if we'll be able to explain it.
They ran the card that he handed out had, it was two-sided and one was the number and the other was an explanation. And it was small enough that it would fit on a single页. So, let me... Let me kill that because I was thinking that could be the back of the sheet. Do we have anything on the back sheet this time or is it all on the front?
Right now, it's the policy.
The policy's on the back.
Yeah.
Two sides.
Let's go.
So, that was my thought is if we could get the primary form of the application, this would be the back of the chart.
I'll look at the policy because a lot of it, I think I saw it already done in one or two quarter months. So, we might be able to put that on the first page too. What else?
And I'll see if I can find a like a PDF version of that card in and out.
I've been to the website and a bunch of stuff, but I was trying to figure out which one.
Yeah. I know. I was hoping they had the exact card, but this one... They don't have that.
I had two. This is probably for Christine. One, I was reading the Troy Times, but there's an article in the Troy Times about a Troy nonprofit that needs to fight human trafficking. And so, I was, you know, people think of that as an issue that happened somewhere else, but it happens everywhere. So, I don't know whether this is something we touch on ever. To me, high school health class seemed like a place, and I don't know if it's already there, but... Huh?
I can write it up.
But it seemed like that there's a way because it's, you know, I've read articles, you know, the last five or six years. You know, there's a rule of people going into Birmingham schools who essentially ended up being trafficked, right? So, I just, I got the article, but this is a local Troy nonprofit. And so, I thought that was... I think that was something worth looking into, even if it's, you know, a ten-minute class and say, this is what this can look like. It's not just, you know, people crossing borders. So...
Is that... Do we have any kind of corporation that's a really good point?
That's, I don't know. That's what I'm asking. Because it looks, you know, for most people, human trafficking is humans being forced to go across borders, you know, for whether it's for labor, you know, sexual or things like that. But it can happen, you know, anytime you have a vulnerable person or a population who would be in a conflict. In a twenty-year period, if you can, you know, stop...
Broke that law and it's...
Yeah. So, that was... And it's local too, so it's a local nonprofit. And it's... And it was started because of a person. I don't think the woman was necessarily in Troy, but it was general area, so it's not her. So, that was it. And then the other, now that I'm like, you know, a parent in the transitioning eighth and ninth grade, I think overall the sessions for ninth grade parents are too... The one thing that's in, like, I seek this information out, it's still somewhat of a serious to me is athletics, right? So, had I not gone on a school visit for the work I do here, I wouldn't realize that the Troy High Athletic website is through the Troy High high school website and doesn't reside... Or that's...
So, we have, there are some issues currently with all of our athletic websites. So, they cannot be connected to our website at the current moment because they're posted on other sites and they're not AD compliant. And so, we have to work with the other companies in order to get them up to ours to be AD compliant.
And it's funny, that's true, Jeff, but I'm saying that that's not functional, like... Because I can't... And then I, when I went to the second high school night, which was this past, last week, where the students come in and do their own thing, parents do, my expectation was that I, as a parent, would find out something about athletics. And instead, my child, a piece of paper, got something about when there's like basketball practices that start literally this week, right? So, it's high school girls' basketball, which is a winter sport, and there's open gyms that start this Wednesday. If she had not attended, if I had not attended, and then I proceeded to go on my phone to the Troy High website to get to the athletics page, and then I continued to do it on my phone. And I haven't had time to... So, it's... It seemed like there's a lot that is really difficult to access unless you either know... I had other parents who were informed by other parents who the coach knew who sent them information about these open gym practices. And I happened to get a text message or a screenshot. What if I'm not in that group of parents? It seems like there is a whole lot of information that's not accessible unless you're already in it. And so, and I know quite a few people and I'm having a hard time figuring out... Because I couldn't access it on my phone. I don't know when trials for volleyball. I assume there's some time in August because it's a fall sport. So, it... And it's not something that was addressed to the parents for the ninth, at either of the ninth grade nights that say, you know, just so you know, athletics starts in some cases next week because... Well, I would assume that it would, you know, it's if it's a winter sport, their freshman year, it's not going to start in May. So, I think there's some of that information is...
Yeah. And so, what hearing you say is like we just need to communicate better some of the components of athletics, which we can certainly work on through our website, but also I'll work with that.
But I think at the ninth grade nights, I, as a parent, receive no information where you access athletics, a warning of FYI, just so you know, if your child plays a sport, even if it's like an indoor winter sport, some of those activities start now. If you have questions, this is where you go. Because I'm having a hard time figuring out...
I was gonna say, any extracurricular to us, just spring. I mean, it's because the theater program has a big conditions in the spring for a fall. Like, it's so...
It's worth it. You need to know by November.
I understand that it is, but it's not right.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying.
It's the extracurricular that starts in the spring to...
But I think, so I started sports because it's a... There's so many. It's a big component. Theater might be one of them, but it's... There is a lack of information and I, as a parent who is seemingly involved, am having a really hard time figuring out where and when my child is supposed to be. So...
We'll give examples of that across multiple functions. Like, if there is a separate Troy high school counselor's website that's not connected to the district site at all. And I only found it because I was looking up one of the counselors that I typed and I Googled it and it showed up like, what's this? And I click on it. It's an entirely different website and it has, it's a nice website. It introduces all of them and their philosophy and everything, but I'm like, that should be folded into the, you know, our primary website. When the committee...
It's like, I'm not in there. Don't worry.
Effective now. It's effective.
Yeah. No, but it's going to be, it's going to be on our platform.
Yeah.
So, Melissa and I are working on building all of that in on the backend.
What's the hardest... I was going to ask you, someone were talking about this. What's your status on the rebuild?
So, we have, Melissa and I have been meeting with departments this week, last week and next week to work on layouts, right? What they want to move to the new site, what they want to, you know, do away with. So, we've been working with them. We worked with principals a month ago to work on navigation menus. So, we're trying to have consistent navigation menus from elementary to middle to high school, right? Similar headings or so that, right? As you move through the ages, you can find the same things in the same place. We have our first design meeting this Thursday with Find a Site. So, they, we provided them with an inspiration, right? Inspiration page. And they come back to us with, okay, this is what we can do. This is what we can build. And we say, we liked this, we don't. So, it's our first design meeting with feedback. So, we're excited to see kind of what they come up with. And then we'll kind of begin going from there.
Are they going to provide wireframes that you can, where we can actually practice through and make sure that the logic gets set with people if they approve?
So, we will have also, we're going to do a few surveys for families, which I discussed tonight in my presentation at WACS, right? Do you want to get your feedback about what you like about the website, what you want to see changed, right? That will go out to staff. We'll provide you different people...
From a navigate, because I do this for a living, from a navigation perspective, do we have parents, have we had any discussions with parents to design navigation so that they can talk about, what are the things that are most important? What should be at the top of the level? What should be at the bottom? Because I, we've never done that. Like, all the websites have all been designed by insiders and so the... Every time I go on our current website, I get so fascinated because I think the things that I know every parent wants to find are not easily accessible.
All of our navigation menus will change completely.
Doesn't matter unless those are changing in a way that you got an input from whoever uses the website.
So, that's what we're doing, right?
But a survey won't do that.
No, no. But that's part of the, that's part of why we're meeting with principals, with secretaries. The secretaries were part of this Blood Masters, were part of that meeting to get their feedback of what they hear, right? From families calling, contacting us.
That's still secondary though, right?
So, that's a piece of it. So, then once we have kind of a layout, a framework, then we can say, okay, great. Do we like this? Do we not like this? Are we headed in the right direction? And begin to get feedback on that.
From parents at that point?
I would like to start that.
I would say that's essential you do that. Like, that's a good point to bring in because then if they look and go, this is backwards, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Each, we've tried to look at what's out there, right? What all Golden County, what Michigan, what private schools, what... Right? We've done a lot of research of what's out there and what's best practice. So, we are probably moving to more of instead of prioritized, an alpha menu, an alpha navigation so that everything is much easier to find if you're alpha. And then we will do away probably with some of the find it fast because we will need it because of where we're putting this, which I explained to Rich when I came in was I work on the backend of Find a Site and I have a hard time finding it. So, right? And we're on a very old, our platform is very old.
Yeah. That part doesn't matter. It's really the logic of the navigation. You can have an old platform, but if the navigation is logical, for the user, it's always fine. But you can't find that out if you're not letting the user help you define the characters.
Correct. But old platform may be problematic for a typical or whoever is trying to make sure it's secure.
Yeah. I never worry about security. I worry about ease of use.
So, security is important as well.
Right. That's all I'm talking about. I trust that they're going to worry about security. I'm more concerned about...
The...
Ease of use.
The other thing with security is, for example, Troy High, right? It's on a troycoast.org. It's not even on a K-12 by Mahatta U.S.
So, we've talked about that as well. We've talked a lot. So, when we initially started the process, we researched all of the different domains that we could possibly change to. We had lots of discussion about that. And we will probably remain with our domains because a domain that we could get, we don't, we're not in favor of any of the domains that we could get. And there's not enough of them that we can secure. For example, you have, we want to for safety and security measure to get the dot com, the dot net, the dot org. And our choices make it really, our websites really long, which I don't love. So, there will be a change in our domain, but it won't be as short and as sweet as I... I can't see if that makes sense because it's the ones that... I can't see if that makes sense because it's the ones that I would like or that we would like are not available.
So you're changing to a dot org kind of ones, not a K-12, I'm not a US, it's what you're thinking.
So I don't remember how, where we end up falling. I think that it is in fact, like it's, it's within the final site. And I think it's, it's like a, ends with Troy High, right? Something Troy High. I'll have to double check with Melissa where we ended up. But we ended up either like leaving them completely the same or going in so that it's a consistent website that's like Troy High at the end or Lyles at the end or.
And I'm assuming we're working with Article or whoever is the security company to make sure that those domains are secure and.
They do that on their end, so Final Site has that all built in, so, yeah.
Did you raise that?
No, I thought, no, I thought it was my just, I, because I'm finding it's a big history. I think there's several touchpoints for people that need to.
But I, I mean, I did raise it, but as I say, it's, athletics isn't the only place we're doing that to people, so.
When is, has there been a policy committee, uh, equity, yeah?
I don't want to miss that. I think I'll give it to you in a half a survey. Well, we're looking at the AI to the policy, AI policy to the policy. The last AI account, because they, Gary hasn't, that'll issue, they came up. So we have to study it, so we need to pre-study.
I would make two things. One is I went to the parliamentary procedures workshop at the past, this year, and I just realized I myself don't do a whole lot of things right, which I'm going to learn and try and improve. That's one thing. The second thing I wanted to bring up is we did have our first community conversation with Nina and I, for, for a while, we had very little tenants, probably five, nine, ten. But it was a very nice conversation with that.
We've got one or two new faces, so I think that's, there was an opportunity to call. Somebody else who will come in and ask questions.
I'm sure we'll probably get rid of the coffee.
Yes.
What's happening here?
Yes.
Yeah, so. You're very wellies.
Yeah, I, I feel, I wanted to talk about the NASP steps of the cover. And I, I'm going to email my questions in the, I have them, so I don't. It's Teacher Appreciation Week at Great Hall. There's not a lot of people here that's.
All right, and the only thing I have under other is that, that I can know about the U of M students that wanted to build the AI applications. And they did give that, and I asked them whether it was part of a course, because that I want to know whether it's a passion project, they said it was a passion project, so.
I email them, they know me as well.
So I said, you know, he's, he said those, I didn't know that, but he said, he said, I'm pleased, it's a legitimate.
All right, I just was like, like, I'm not quite sure what you're asking for here, but I would love to hear you come to a public, a public comment about your pitch.
So, I mean, I think it's interesting, it's basically they're, they're, they would like to do, it's called the RAG application, AI application, which is a, it's a retrieval meta-generation application. And the idea would be to help everyone better understand the important work of education. Basically, so it, it's essentially a smart search engine that would search our policy book and key facts about the district and bring up the document that has been. So it does, it's done in LLM that actually translates and gives you a summary. It just points you to the document that contains that information. So if you said, what was the school's annual budget last year? It would, it would search, find the document and show you the document. And so it's three U of M students who would like to, to build it in Troy residence. The, the main person who wrote me, he's got, he's got two little kids. It's my family, three moved to Troy 2021, walked in here last year, trading their grade one first. Thank you for your service with Troy Organization. So I told him, it sounds, you know, I said, it sounds interesting. And, and I think, in my office, again, anything that makes it easier for people to find information, and if it's not interpreted to show any information that we have, is there. And I told him that I, I said, well, let me, let me talk to the superintendent and I'm sure I'm going to talk to Director of IT about it. So I don't know if you and Troy talked or not, I told you yesterday, so. Okay, so anyway, so I'll just, if anything, I want to add for this conversation. I, you can, yeah, I, I mean. You're, I, I, I shared. Yeah, I did, I did. So I sent it to the two of you, you can have it to each other. And, and I didn't know what to, I didn't know what to, I'm like, I don't know how to answer this. The only thing I wanted to know was, is there, I want to know if Troy thought there's a risk here, right? I don't think there would be, but someone in IT would tell me.
It's a complicated document. I don't even think he needs our permission.
No, what he's asking for is, he said, we're reaching, we tell you for help, that's our knowledge on workplace reports, your expertise in market research and long tenure would give us a valuable perspective on the kind of questions that are most relevant to us. So. Yeah, yeah. And said, we would also appreciate guidance for establishing validity answers to such questions to evaluate and test the RAG app. So essentially, they want us to go in and, and run it through the straps and make sure that it proves its validity, response of that. So the only thing I have questions for, you know, if, if you want to get on call with Troy, any, you know, one question I would have for Troy is this sort of thing for, is it self-sustained or is it part of, it's like, in six months, it's dead, and it goes up invalid information or? And, and it doesn't have to tie into our website in some way, or is it just crawling around and finding pages and pointing to great relationships? So I just want to know from an IT perspective.
I think, I think it requires our sustain.
Requires our what to work?
Sustain.
Oh, yes, well, that's me too, is that, if this is just a like one time thing and it's six months, it's dead, it's like, you know what, we don't have the resources to maintain these things. But if the AI portion of it allows it to sort of self-maintain and learn and produce the, you know, the health, things that no one's going to look at, you always want that information to be in the same place for it, and it can just pull it up, then it becomes an interesting tool that we can provide it into on our own page.
Yeah, that's what I felt like too. I felt like, I mean, the data that he's going to search for is probably there, so he really didn't need our permission. I have a feeling what he really wanted was that us to, his app on the website say, hey, do you want to know? I love Troy. And then we ask the question, our visitor on the website asks that question, he missed two, because that's how he uses it.
Well, and I, that last comment about, he's thinking about, what are the, what are the types of questions you tend to get, right? So that they can start thinking about where the types of documents we have access to. So, so, yeah, why don't you talk to Troy, see what he says? And then if he says, yeah, there's one little problem, then maybe we can set up something, please guys, talk to him. And, and then everyone finds out, what is it going on with us? I agree that, but if minimal info from us, it allows to provide kind of a fun tool for families if you want to quickly search, because people always say, it's so hard to find, you know, documents. And I thought that that's a really nice aim, but you can formulate a question.
Maybe you should find out if the website is updated, so.
Well, yeah, and finally, having that conversation, like he's, I asked him what his timetable was. So he didn't know the background. Our timetable is going to be out in a usable shape by the fall. In case of emergency, we like to make decisions on a general election. And he says, it's our passion project, you know, we're able to be a wall. That said, we have the interest for U of M School of Education or Public Policy to see if we can give their help with research expertise or resources. So if, if, if you have students that are playing around with this, they're looking for partners in the front. And I thought, it's, I think it's a, it's really a beautiful one. And it's all the same, I think, that's all she can make of the screen. This is great. Okay, all right, so that's it, that's all I have. And now we want to talk about the rest of the work. And you guys want to stay, you don't want to stay, let's try to talk a little bit.
If you go out there, that seems nice.